I'd like to call the Lane County Board of Commissioners to order. Today is Tuesday, October 27, 2015, for our regular meeting. And the first item on the agenda is adjustments to the agenda. Any adjustments to the agenda? I will note that we do have exec session time certain this afternoon and another time certain item at 10:30 today. So, we need to stay pretty close on time with everything. And also that Commissioner Lichen is going to have to leave us at 11:30. So, I am going to adhere to our three minutes on public comments and ask that the board adhere to the two minutes on remonstrance because we do need to move through our items today. So, the first item in business after adjustments agenda is public comments. I've got two people signed up right now. You'll just state your name and where you're from for the record, and then I'll begin your three minutes. So, the first person is Michael Carrigan, followed by Kathleen D. Ballista.
Good morning. My name is Michael Carrigan. I live in the Whittaker neighborhood in Eugene. I'm the program director of Community Alliance of Lane County, which has been advocating for human rights in Lane County since 1966. Early this year, I took part in discussions led by then-county staffer George Russell to identify needs in equity work that Lane County should actively address. We're excited to hear that the Equity Plan calls for the establishment of an advisory board that provide counsel to the county administrator. As a community partner, Calcas committed either serving on the board or finding community members to serve on the board who will be strong and effective advocates for human rights. We're excited about all aspects of the proposed Equity Plan, requiring a minimum of three hours training for all staff is a big step forward, as is addressing recruitment, selection, retention, and advancement concerns. But what is especially critical is institutionalizing equity efforts. We feel strongly the county needs to find at least roughly a halftime position in order to effectively coordinate the equity work. This should be in addition to time put in by the county administrator and operations director. Working with Steve and other county staff to establish and coordinate the Nuttingell Rest Stop for the Unhoused on county land has been a great experience and very successful. Calcas committed to rolling up our sleeves and helping make the equity process even more successful. Thank you for providing me the time to speak today.
Thank you. And now, we have Kathleen D. Ballista.
Hi. Hello. My name is Kathleen D. Batista from Eugene. And I would like to address the hefty raises that are proposed by the county. I was reading the article and saw that the Human Resources Department has recommended these raises. And I believe the Human Resources Department is top on the list to receive the 14.3 percent increase. All of my working years, I've never received any more than five or six percent increase in any kind of a job. And I believe that there are so many programs in the county that could use the additional money, the differences, to increase for the people that you serve their programs. The list is long. You've got the juvenile services, human health services, you have the disability services to the people who are needing this extra money. And I believe a five or six percent increase in your pay over years would provide this money to go towards the services for the people that you are serving. And, you know, we're talking $266 a week increase on some, close to 400 a week increase on others, and then noticing that the office support staff had no raise. So, it would really help the people of the county if you would not recommend the 14 percent increase at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. So, that's everyone I had signed up to address the board. Was there anyone else that wished to address the board this morning? Seeing none, then we'll move on to Commissioner's response to public comment and/or other issues in remonstrance. I'll just note real quick for Kathleen, and I'm sorry for butchering your name. Contrary to how the register guard presented it in their headline, no one is going to get a 14.9 percent increase. The salary range, the very top of the salary range moves by that much for certain people, but they will be moved to the next step closest to their current pay. And in the case of department heads, I think that's a few cents an hour. And then they'll be eligible for their regular step increases after that when it comes time. It just gives them headroom. No one's going to get an immediate 14.9 percent. In fact, it'll take them another three years to reach that level. And most of these people have not had other than a 1.5 percent COLA last year, a raise since 2008. So, just to be clear, so...
Do I have a...
No, there's no back and forth at this point. But I just wanted to make clear that it's not a 14.9 percent raise to anybody. So, any other commissioners' response? Thank you. So, moving on to emergency business, is there any emergency business this morning?
No.
Thank you. And moving on to consent calendar, and these are items that are considered routine by the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted in one motion. And if you want to see details on these, you can go online and click on View Materials on our agenda, and you can see the board packet. Is there a motion to approve consent calendar?
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second? They're moved in second. And all those in favor of consent calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. So, moving on to item 6A, County Council Announcements. The only one I think we know of is that we have a time certain exec session at 1:30 today. And then we'll move on to item 7A, County Administration Announcements. Mr. Mokhaiske.
In the interest of time, Mr. Chair, I'll pass for now and certainly can come back and provide any announcements later if we have time.
Thank you. Great. Then we'll move to item 7B, which is an update on the Emergency Operations Planning and Coordination with Lane County Regional Partners. And we have Linda Cook here, our Emergency Management Program Manager. Morning, Linda.
Thank you for allowing me to present to you today. This is a really important topic in my view, and I appreciate your interest and your engagement. I didn't know if I should wait for him to return or not. Okay, so, what I'd like to do is take a few moments and, first of all, I'm going to start my timer so that I keep myself in check because I know that this is a big topic that can cause me to ramble. And I want to speak with you for about 15 to 20 minutes, and then, because I see that there's 30 minutes allowed for this topic on the agenda, and I wanted to allow myself 15 to 20 minutes to speak with you and then open it up for a dialogue, if that sounds okay to you. First of all, I'd like to start by framing emergency management. Emergency management means different things to different people. And I thought that, given that we all have a little bit of a different tenure with the county, I would just do the broad brush stroke of what emergency management is all about. So, first and foremost, the foundation of emergency management begins with the hazards of Lane County. The state of Oregon requires every county to have an emergency manager because every single county, of course, is vulnerable to some type of hazards. And so, when you take a look at Lane County, as you know, it's a vast region. It's a great geographic expanse. It stretches from the coast to the Cascades. And it also has five different physiographic regions. You know, if you look at the coast, the hazards on the coast can be a storm surge and flooding. And of course, we talk about the Cascadia Subduction Zone being on the seafloor 40 miles off the coast of Oregon, which could result in a massive earthquake and a tsunami. You move inland, you've got the coast foothills, which is a very sparsely populated area, has fewer hazards that we think about. When you move into the valley, you get the entire spectrum, everything from severe winter storms that can result in some long-term power outages for some of our residents to flooding, windstorms. We have nine U.S. Army Corps of Engineer dams in Lane County, as well as two E-Web dams and the Holt Pond Dam. I believe that's owned by the Bureau of Land Management. So, we have a lot of water control features in Lane County that could potentially provide or present some type of hazard. Then you go into the Cascade foothills where you've got snow. And then, of course, when you get high up to like Oak Ridge and Westford like we did last year, you have the wildfire concerns. So, as you can imagine, I feel like I'm getting some weird sounds on that. Do I sound okay to you?
Yes. You sound great.
So, when you take a look at the vast geographic expanse of Lane County and all of the different microclimates in between, the number of different hazards that folks face, you know, our residents face and our visitors to Lane County face, they're very broad. So, what we do in emergency management is we make sure that we're focusing on what I call the three pedestals of the stool: planning, training, and exercises. And so, currently, what we're working on, we're working, we have several different plans in progress right now. We have the Hazard Mitigation Plan, which focuses on all of these hazards, but it's due for an update. It was last promulgated by the Board of County Commissioners in 2012. It's due for an update in 2017. And for this update, we decided that we needed to include our smaller cities. So, this Hazard Mitigation Plan now will not only be about all of Lane County and the rural areas, but it will incorporate all of our small cities and the hazards that they are most concerned about and the projects that they would like to have represented in this plan. And the benefit to them, not only does it give them something to take to their city councils and get approval for projects, but it also positions them to get federal grant funds in the event that certain grant programs open up for those types of projects. We are also working on Emergency Operations Plan. I think the last time I spoke with you, my intent was to get it done by July 1 of 2015. That was a self-imposed deadline because I believe that that Emergency Operations Plan needs to be updated on a certain periodic basis. I've decided to segue that into the state's update cycle, and they don't require it to be updated until June of 2016. And then I'll be on cycle with the rest of the state, getting that plan updated every other year. And the reason that I opted to go ahead and delay is because we have a couple of really big things happening in the next six months. We have the Cascadia Rising Exercise, and I'll talk about that in a moment, but that is a statewide exercise that I believe that by participating in that exercise, we're going to learn an awful lot about what should be in our Emergency Operations Plan. I think we're going to, if we were to update our Emergency Operations Plan and then go test it through this exercise, we find out, oh, we need all these updates, and then it would kind of interfere with our cycle. So, that's one big piece that's going on. The other piece is we are going to, in preparation for this Cascadia Rising Exercise, be training more staff in our Emergency Operations Center functions. If you recall, last May, you all participated in an Emergency Operations Center training, as well as many of the employees throughout the county. I felt that that was a really good broad brush stroke of what an Emergency Operations Center should function like. What I feel is missing, and this was also the opinion of Chief Deputy Greg Fox, is that there, we need more position-specific training for our Emergency Operations Center. Lane County is a big, big county. It's got many departments. It's got a huge geographic expanse. It's got a tiny emergency management program and a tiny Emergency Operations Center. And I don't think you can take something that is textbook out of FEMA and say, okay, this will work in Lane County. So, to address that, I'm bringing in a consultant, starting in November. He's going to come through, do a walkthrough. He's going to take a look at our physical space. I'm going to talk to him about our human resource constraints. And from that, we're going to develop Emergency Operations Centers, position-specific training that is customized to Lane County and takes into consideration our very real constraints. Additional planning, we have Continuity of Operations Plan software that all of our departments use and have been using, I want to say, since 2011 or 2012. The challenge with that is that different departments are at different places in their use of that software. But what the beauty of this Continuity of Operations software is that it's co-located. It is located, stored, or hosted in Tennessee so that if we have a massive power outage, and the only thing we can do is somehow get internet access, we can tap into that system. And in that Continuity of Operations software, departments have loaded in who their Continuity of Operations Planning Team members are, who their relocation team members are, who's going to actually physically relocate folks, and as well as materials and supplies. It includes equipment lists and materials and supplies lists that people need to have at the ready if they need to relocate to a different facility, if this, our main office here is compromised. Vital records, what are the key records that we need to always be maintaining. I'm trying to think of what else I might be missing. But it is a very broad, well-thought-out piece of software that allows us to go in, oh, contact lists for sure, go in and update on the fly so that it's not one of those static plans that sits on the shelf, but it's constantly being updated and can remain relevant at any moment, at any time, and accessible at any moment, at any time. So, that's the third plan we're working on. So, you know, I started and I said, there's, you know, three, the three things: planning, training, and exercises. So, the planning that we're doing is the Hazard Mitigation Plan, multi-jurisdictional, the Emergency Operations Plan update, and the Continuity of Operations Plan is continuously in progress. And with regard to training, I mentioned the EOC training that we're going to be focusing on. That's going to be a big undertaking, so it's about the only training that I can see as having capacity to focus on over the next six months. So, let's talk about exercises. So, let's go back to the Cascadia Rising Exercise. You might see it referred to as CR-16, Cascadia Rising Dash 2016. CR-16 is a big, multi-state exercise that's going to involve Idaho, Washington, Oregon, and FEMA Region 10 to participate in an exercise that simulates a full rupture of the Cascadia Subduction Zone. As I mentioned that, I'm sure you're aware of it, but just for those who may have forgotten, we have this massive fault line sitting about on the ocean floor, sitting about 40 miles off the coast of Florence, but it stretches from Northern California to Southern British Columbia. And scientists tell us that they think that it's creating pressure plates, the Northern American Plate and the Wanda Fuka Plate are pressing up against each other. And at some point, there's going to, something's going to give, and we're going to have a massive 9.0 earthquake, might even exceed what Japan saw. Then there's the other side that says, you know, maybe it's just a really slow slip over time. Maybe, maybe we aren't in for the big one. Maybe we're going to be okay. So, I think there is still more research that needs to be done. But nonetheless, there is this very real concern about a massive earthquake hitting Oregon and, of course, Lane County. So, these, this multi-state exercise is being hosted by FEMA. The idea is to draw in as many counties, and then the counties, it's up to the counties to invite the cities to participate with them. It's going to be over four days, from July 7, June 7 through 10 in 2016. It'll go for four days. It's eight to five every day, so it's not going to be around the clock. We'll be activating our Emergency Operations Center. Sheriff Trapp, under his leadership, has decided he would like us to activate the Emergency Operations Center for all four days to run all of our staff through what that means to function in the Emergency Operations Center. And we will be interfacing with the cities of Eugene and Springfield and any other entities that would like to participate in that exercise. And then we'll be feeding that up to the state, and the state will be feeding that to the federal government, to the FEMA, FEMA Region 10, and the Oregon National Guard. Big exercise, FEMA, of course, the federal government never does anything small or easy. They've produced a massive, what they call a ground truth document of all the potential things that could go wrong in Lane County. They're asking us to downsize that, make that manageable so that we can actually play with it. But as you can imagine, if you're going to be participating in an exercise over four days, you've got to have enough happening in the EOC to keep people busy so they don't get bored and think, why am I doing this? But you don't want them so overwhelmed that they throw their hands up and say, well, there's really nothing we could do anyway. So, we're trying to strike that balance of giving people some challenging problems to solve if this had been a real incident. So, checking my time, when I checked my stuff at home, I really was way long. So, I'm about 11 minutes into this. I think I'll take a timeout to find out if you have any questions at this point, because I'd like this to be a dialogue to make sure that I'm addressing anything that's on your minds.
Press your floor.
So, I had one question as we start thinking about this CR-16 exercise. Association Oregon Counties has started a sister county program where they're having counties from east and west or dislike areas try and develop a relationship to provide emergency backup, you know, and I think the first ones like Tillamook and Yuma-Tilla, you know, where one might, might be having a real problem with wildfires in the middle of summer when Tillamook isn't and might be, you know, a possibility of lending equipment and manpower. Have we looked at at all developing a sister county relationship with maybe Deschutes County where, you know, they're on one side of the Cascades or Lamont Valley, different set of emergencies and all that? Have we had any discussions with another county yet, or have you heard of, have you even heard of the sister counties?
I haven't heard it characterized as sister counties.
Yeah.
I will say the regional concept has been debated and explored over the years. At one point, Oregon Emergency Management actually produced a regional map, and I think that sometimes they still do refer to that. Many aspects of emergency response has been regionalized. Healthcare preparedness has been regionalized. Of course, hazmat has been regionalized. The problem that we run into is we are so thinly resourced here in Lane County that for us to actually leave to go help another county would leave us with zero staff. I mean, I don't know, that might, I don't even know that that's an overstatement. I can't imagine us having the capacity to go help another county. There have been many opportunities where I've seen fires this summer, almost seeing, it felt like the whole state all around us was on fire, and I felt compelled. I was really wishing that I could go help Douglas County or some of the other counties. And I realized that if I did that, there would be nobody here in Lane County if something were to happen. Now, I do know that we sent a couple of deputies down to investigate the Umquah shooting. But I like the idea. I think it's the way to go. Unfortunately, our staffing levels in Lane County, I just haven't been able to pursue it or even recommend it at this point.
Just to kind of tag on to that conversation, it doesn't necessarily have to be sheriff's office resources. It could be our Public Works Department. Just hypothetically, they're probably not trained for, to put out fires, but after the fires, if you experience a wet period and there's some flooding and some, you know, plugged roads with debris and stuff, it could be that we didn't get hit and we could send some of our staff over there. So, you know, it could be other resources that we have and understand that we're limited in lots of areas.
Right, right.
And if I'm, I missed you.
Go ahead.
You mentioned a little bit about the Emergency Operations Center and the size of it and everything. Has there been conversations or work towards considering, you know, upgrading that, or is that going to be driven by the planning process to see what we actually need?
Well, I hear that there's plans to rebuild the courthouse at some point, or, put it this way, I'm not directly linked in to the folks that look at our facilities and what our facility needs are, but every chance I get, I remind the sheriff, I remind the chief deputy, and they really actually don't even need reminding to bring that up. So, I really don't know where to go with an answer to that question. I do mention it to as many people as I can that I think can actually do something about the need to have a larger EOC. But again, my perception is that we are so resource constrained and new construction projects are probably, I don't know where we're at with new construction projects.
What about, you know, some sort of relationship with this Eugene? I know that we're partners in different things, but if it rose to the occasion under certain sizes and emergencies that we have to deal with, don't they have a pretty good-sized emergency center out there, west of town here?
They have a really good location at Chambers. Let me see if I can reframe it. We're always open to working with our partners, and we do share facility space. They'll come over and use our dispatch center as a hot backup, and we use their training facility quite often. One of the things that our consultant is going to come out and look at is what other spaces should we be considering? We have large spaces in Lane County that we have just never even thought about using as a potential EOC and setting it up that way. So, my hesitation to reach out to one of our partner agencies is because generally speaking, if something's impacting us, it's impacting them too. And what we really should have in Lane County is a multi-agency coordination center. I think that many of us are struggling just to get our own EOC operational and functional and making sure that all of our staff are trained. My understanding is that, and I don't want to speak for the city of Eugene, but my understanding is that they're doing a lot of EOC training right now as well. And so, it's a challenge, and it's kind of a long-term goal. I can't say that we have mastered how we would do multi-agency coordination. But we, as partner agencies, when something goes sideways, something hits the fan, we are, I think we all kind of open our doors and offer and accept the opportunity to use each other's resources.
Thank you. Press your lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Question I have, Linda, so, this is kind of piggybacking on Chair Bozovich's comments about the sister county. Has there been any sort, or have we talked to the legislature at all about potentially putting together maybe a pilot project on forming a multi-county emergency operation plan from that perspective? Very similar to what we did with the assessors. So, we actually got a pilot project. In fact, I worked with then-Mike Jordan, head of DAS at the time, put together a pilot project funded by the legislature and for a three-year project on the assessors working together. So, they're sharing employees, sharing information, sharing database, and that way, there's a potential about saving costs. But so, you know, so I, that's why I bring this up, that if we could maybe talk about, talk with our legislative delegation about maybe looking at this and forming this, because we focused on the timber counties, the seven timber counties, I think it was Lane, Lane, Lenkus, Curry, Klamath, Jackson-Josephine, Douglas, I think is what it was. I think Lynn was involved, but not, I can't remember. But anyway, and because of the resource issue, we all have low property tax base. And so, instead, forming that coalition together. So, I don't know if that's something that's been discussed, and if not, this is an opportunity, I think, for this board potentially to convene with, maybe with the governor's office or with the Department of Administrative Services on potentially looking at a pilot project. So, kind of piggybacking on Chair Bozovich's comments, just maybe thoughts, maybe thoughts from you on that.
Yeah, I like that idea a lot. I'm always hesitant to talk on behalf of another agency or another department because I'm not a subject matter expert. One of the things that I think should be factored into that is, my understanding is that, for example, utilities in our, in Lane County will go and help other jurisdictions. They have mutual aid agreements. I'm under the impression that Public Works has also mutual aid agreements where they can go and help, I think it's statewide, where they can go and help other jurisdictions. So, what I think the first starting point would be is, when I take a, let me back up for a second. When I take a look at the agencies that respond to major emergencies, it's police, fire, Public Works, public health, hospitals, utilities, and emergency management. I think what the starting point would be to take a look at each of those individual entities. Does fire already have a multi-county agreement? Does Public Works, law enforcement, so on and so forth? Find out who, I think some of them already do have, participate in multi-county agreements. So, I think the first start would be to take an inventory of who's already, who already has those in place, and is there a way to stitch them together? has those in place and is there a way to stitch them together, get them in place for those disciplines that don't have them? And then is there a way to stitch them together for the sister county approach? So, you know, taking into consideration all of your comments that this isn't just about me as an emergency manager or the sheriff's office, it's about the whole spectrum of response. And I think we could do an analysis of that and then figure out where are the gaps and move forward from there.
So a quick follow-up, Mr. Chair. And this was really specifically why we worked with the DAS and Regional Solutions. Part of that is because they had the database, they had the information, they could reach out to the multiple counties, really find out if there was a taste for it. I understand that the assessors' office would be much different than the emergency management because when you look at those counties, guess what? We all have old mill sites, industrial lands are similar. I mean, so it was probably a little bit cleaner. It may work, it may not, but I think at least have in the conversation, and especially with your contacts in the governor's office, maybe just brainstorming to see if this is something worth having. You know, potentially this is maybe something the board may be interested in and take a look at, as Chair Bozovich talked about, you know, the sister county program, but maybe have it where the legislation is put in place. And dollars would follow. That, see, that was the key.
Yeah.
Is that the assessment and taxation coalition wouldn't have worked unless it was funded by the legislature as a pilot, which it was. And Jim Johnson, of course, a former administrator here, former city managers at Portland State, actually ended up being the facilitator. So it worked out quite well because of his knowledge of local government, county government, and the relationship he had with some of the leadership in those counties. So this is some things just that I would just throw out and at least have that conversation. It may or may not work, don't know. So, thank you.
Sure, I think it's a very worthwhile endeavor to pursue, yes.
Any other questions or comments? If you want to go on with your.
So the only other, how am I doing, how much time do I have? A few more minutes? Okay. The only other comment that I wanted to make is, it's planning, training, and exercises, but it's also looking at partnering with other county departments for an internal focus, other agencies outside of Lane County, and then the community. And so internally, I felt that you should know that we have a hazard mitigation and emergency management steering committee that meets quarterly. And their purpose is to provide insight and direction to me to cross-pollinate what each other does in the event of a major emergency or disaster, and then to identify any types of projects that Lane County should take on to try to mitigate any types of hazards, the impacts of any hazards in the area. In terms of working with other agencies, just last week, we convened the emergency managers of Lane County meeting, and we're going to hold that. It'll be a dial-in every month, and then every third month, we'll meet face-to-face. But at the table there were emergency managers, well, let me give you the whole invitation list because the three folks we're missing. Emergency managers from Eugene, Springfield, Cottage Grove, and Florence, Sidesale Valley Fire and Rescue, schools, I should say, higher education, the University of Oregon and Lane Community College, utilities, E-Web was there, Junction City, State Hospital, and Sacred Heart, or Peace Health Medical Center. So we're, and of course, our public health department, and I'm imagining, I'm forgetting one or two, but the point being that we have a lot of emergency managers throughout Lane County that focus on their own agency's work and their needs. And so we do all know each other, we're trying to get to know each other even better and take a look at, are there, what plans is each other working on, what trainings, could we be leveraging that each other is hosting or participating in? And the same goes with exercises. In terms of working with the communities, for example, tonight, I'll be going up Highway 58 to meet with the residents, about 100 residents are going to be gathering in up Highway 58 in Lowell to talk about emergency preparedness. And I'll be back again next week to talk about a Map Your Neighborhood program that they can be using. I've reached out to Markola in the past, or they reached out to me, requested that I participate in some of their community outreach. I'm working with them currently to see if we can get them included in a Homeland Security grant for citizen preparedness. Working with the West Lane communities, recently got a $40,000 grant for them to be able to update their area-wide emergency operations plan, which includes cities of Eugene, or cities of Florence, Dune City, Sidesale Valley Fire and Rescue, West Lane Ambulance, the port, the hospital. So I am constantly reaching out, doing a lot of, doing a lot of talks at a lot of community events, a lot of civic center or civic group type outreach. So I wanted to let you know that in addition to the planning, training, and exercises, it's also, emergency management is about working internally with the county departments, working externally with the cities, and then, of course, our community members as well. So that concludes pretty much everything I wanted to convey to you. And most importantly, I wanted to make myself available to answer any questions.
Thank you. And I'm really glad to hear about the coordination with the other cities and other agencies. It's not just cities. Because one of the things that, you know, you've noted how resource-strapped we are and in a case of a county-wide emergency, it may be your local fire department or your local municipality that is going to have to be there to take care of the citizens in that area. You know, they can't be depending on the county's emergency management system necessarily to be the first level of response, just as we don't count on the federal government to be the first level of response. You know, FEMA doesn't show up for three days to two weeks. You know, ask folks in South Carolina or Louisiana that. It's really about the local response and the most local level. And it's good to hear that you're coordinating with those local responders and making, you know, and there's conversations around, you know, joint training and where are people with their emergency action plans and, you know, making sure they understand they do need to have their own. As part of, part of, you know, there kind of gets to be this, oh, well, the state throws that function on counties that they have to have this emergency operations manager in each county, and that means we're covered as a small city. It's not necessarily a wise position to take. And I'm glad that we're having those conversations once a month with those emergency planners and everybody's getting on the same page because it's so important. And then second, I'm really happy to hear your meeting with citizens because, you know, even before your municipality or your local fire department responds, it's really going to be up to your citizens to respond. I mean, we just, we're seeing video coming out of Afghanistan and the earthquake there the last couple of days. I didn't see what looked like government workers moving bricks and digging people out. It looked like everybody that lived there was doing the digging out and having to respond. And they're talking about they haven't even gotten to a lot of the remote villages. Those people, you know, 24, 48 hours are still on their own. And people have to understand they need to try and start preparing themselves for that, you know, eventuality. They may be on their own for a short period of time.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Stewart.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So Linda, I was curious, my understanding that Cottage Grove did an exercise not too long ago, are you familiar with that or not?
Um, gosh, I know they did a community meeting or a community event, a fair, a preparedness fair.
Oh, okay.
Is that perhaps what you're talking about?
Yeah, it was over by the hospital. I thought it was more of an exercise in case there was an emergency or, you know, a training event. So I guess maybe I was misunderstood.
Yeah, it was a really good, we did participate. I was there and our sheriff's office vehicle was there, you know, brought some of our deputies out, and our public health department was there. A great, great community event. They had life flight there for the kids to look at. They probably had maybe 250 folks come through over that Saturday morning and very well-attended, really good vendor setup. I just thought it was a great event, and it was their first inaugural event, so they helped to do it repeatedly. So hats off to Cottage Grove, they did a great job with that.
Okay, so that was more of a community. So I was just trying to think about the exercise component. You talked a lot about planning, training. And we've had a couple of different exercises here locally this past year, haven't we?
Yeah, we do quite a few exercises. We exercise at least once per quarter. On December 2nd, we're going to be, let me give credit where credit is due, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers has been very good about hosting quarterly exercises here for us in Lane County. And historically, it's been pretty much just inviting Lane County government employees. And on December 2nd, they said, let's open it up, let's get it out there, and we'll have a wide number of different agencies, including Lane County, participating in that. And during the summer, we participated in mass casualty incident exercise that was hosted by McKenzie Fire and Rescue up the McKenzie River there. Our big focus is trying to get ready for the Cascadia Rising exercise. But yes, we do exercise quite regularly and oftentimes it brings other agencies in as well. They're usually multi-agency. Oh, and I should put a plug in. I do think you should be aware that there is a significant active shooter effort going on over in Florence right now in the West Lane area. I do want to call out Sergeants Hoberg and Denham, who have done an amazing job, I think, getting to every school in Lane County, K-12 school in Lane County, to teach the curriculum. Florence area is taking it a step further. They're, they've done the training, they're working out, reaching out to their school districts, and they're going to do a very significant full-scale exercise in April where they'll bring fire and EMS and law enforcement, schools, hospital, the vast array of responders together in April. And we are contributing a small sum of money from the emergency management budget to help with that.
Thank you.
I thought they just had an active shooter exercise at the high school in Florence just this past summer.
That was a training. That was tactical training where they were focusing, I believe, on the police response. This is going to be the full spectrum, you know, everything.
Very good.
Yeah.
Great. Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you very much for the update.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you very much.
And with that, I am going to juggle our agenda a little bit, seeing we've got 45 minutes almost. And I'm going to move item 8A up to this slot, which is Human Resources, Order 15102707, the matter of improving Lane County's public sector market competitiveness through updated salary ranges for non-represented employees effective January 2016. And we have Marcia Edwards here. So Ms. Edwards.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning, commissioners. Thanks for allowing me to come in and talk with you this morning. I'm just going to go through a few bullet points. I know that you're very busy on your agenda this morning, so I'll try to keep it as brief as possible. So the matter before you today concerns the improvement of Lane County's public sector market competitiveness through updating salary ranges for non-represented employees effective January 2016. Now, our non-rep employees are the folks that open our clinics, run our police services, ensure that we're looking at the benefit costs and making sure that we're looking at reductions there, trying to manage that for the county. So overall, what they're trying to do is make sure that your priorities, your strategic priorities are accomplished each year. So just a little bit of background, on September 3rd in 2008, the board approved a 2% cost-of-living adjustment, you know, better known as a COLA, for non-represented employees. And then for approximately six years from 2009 through 2014, there were no cost-of-living or other range adjustments for our non-rep employees. During that same time period, there was an average adjustment of 1.65% per year COLA for our represented employees. On September 20th, 2013, Fox Lawson completed a salary study for non-rep employees and no action was taken in regard to that study. On December 9th, 2014, the board approved a 1.5% COLA for our non-represented employees that became effective in January of 2015. And again, this was the first adjustment since 2008. Also, on that same date, the board instructed Human Resources to further evaluate non-rep salary ranges and recommend appropriate adjustments to ranges in 2015. On September 22nd of this year, the Board of Commissioners approved changes to health insurance plans for non-represented employees that will be hired after January 1, 2016. The changes include eliminating the cost-of-co-pay plan and replacing with the lower-cost plan and implementing monthly employee premium payments. These changes are intended to reduce overall health insurance costs for future non-represented employees. In October of 2015, a compensation study was completed for non-rep positions by Gallagher Benefit Services Incorporated's Fox Lawson Group. The study resulted in a recommendation to adopt revised salary ranges. We used the same comparators that we're using for our represented positions. Those would be Clackamas County, Deschutes County, Jackson County, Marion County, and Washington County. If approved, the costs associated with this would be 348, approximately 348,980 for fiscal year 2015-16. So some of the issues this has created while our salaries have been kind of falling behind, increased difficulty recruiting and retaining many of our non-represented positions, both for external and internal recruitment. Lane County's current supervisor-to-employee ratio is approximately 1 to 7.1. The median ratio for the two largest city governments within Lane County is approximately 1 to 5.85. This means that our non-reps have to put in longer hours, manage a broader range of services to get the job done. And with salary ranges that are below market, it becomes increasingly difficult to persuade internal candidates to accept offers at the lower end of the range. I'm sorry, not internal, but all candidates to accept at the lower end of the range. In fact, it's become pretty commonplace for folks to need to start at the higher end of the range. And unfortunately, there are situations where supervisors and managers are making the same or lower take-home pay than the folks that they're supervising. And again, this is because our salaries have been lagging for our non-rep positions while our represented positions have been going up over the years. So the options before you today are to adopt the proposed salary ranges effective on January 1, 2016. This would place employees in the step closest to, but not less than, their current step, and would allow us to provide competitive salary ranges for recruitment and retention of skilled non-represented employees while providing minimal increases to individual Or the board could certainly choose to reject the motion to adopt the proposed salary ranges and provide alternative direction to staff. And of course, this would mean continued lag in our salaries. So Human Resources is recommending approval of the proposed salary ranges today. And just as a related little fact here, the average salary increase would be approximately $1.17 per hour, with the lowest being 4 cents per hour for our director-level positions. And if the adjustments had been applied annually from 2000 to 2014, that would have meant an approximate annual increase of 20 cents per hour. So implementation, you know, it would, the proposed salary ranges would take effect the first full pay period of January 2016. Folks would be moved to the closest step, but not below their current step. And then to ensure that this doesn't happen again, as far as allowing our salaries to lag, what we would be doing in Human Resources is looking every year at the market to make sure that, see what our neighbors are doing, to make sure that we're, again, you know, keeping on par with them, and then also going out for a full market study every two to three years. Any questions I can answer for you?
Commissioner Farr. Thank you. 4 cents an hour, did you say?
Yes, yes. That's the lowest. That's the lowest.
And the people involved are folks like, I mean, are non-represented, does that include our public health director, our public health officer?
Yes, it does.
Doctor?
Oh, actually, no, physicians are not included. Our physician classification is not included.
Well, Mr. Chair, I've got a couple of things to say, and then I'm going to have a couple of questions later. You know, pay equity is very important, obviously. I've been a human resource manager for profit, I've been a human resource manager in for-profit and nonprofit organizations, world-class organizations, some of the very, very best. I was the executive manager of Jerry's Home Improvement Center, which is one of the area's largest private employers. I was also the human resource director. I was the executive director of I was the executive director of Food for Lane County. I was also the human resource director, uh, in charge of pay and benefits. And, uh, that was a competitive environment, for-profit, nonprofit, and in, in government agencies. At Jerry's, we're in competition with, among others, we're in competition with Home Depot, with Lowe's, with Eugene Plaining Mill, and other companies that went out of business. We're also in, we're also in competition with, with the other businesses that weren't in our genre. You know, people who were trying to steal our employees, that weren't doing necessarily the same thing that we were doing. And so, I, it was important that I needed to attract and to train and retain talented staff members in order to fulfill our, our value mission. And our value mission at Jerry's was to delight our customers with, uh, by exceeding their expectations with world-class service through a productive and supportive work environment. So, took care of our customers and took care of the staff that worked for us because our staff took care of the customers. Very important distinction there. Without well-trained staff and without the right talented people on, on board, we weren't able to take care of our customers. Uh, Food for Lane County, I was in competition with, uh, obviously, other nonprofits, but there were also other people from different genres that would love to have had my employee, employees, the ones that I attracted, the ones that I trained, the ones that I was trying very, very hard to retain. Uh, at Food for Lane County, our value, our mission statement was, "Nobody should be hungry." And, uh, in order to ensure that we were doing the best to make sure that nobody would be hungry, we had to train and retain the very best professionals to do that. Otherwise, we weren't going to fulfill our mission. It's not different, it, there's not very much difference in, in the public sector. I'm talking about private, and I'm talking about nonprofit. I've not been a human resource director in the public sector, but I, I view it as being very, very same, very, very similar. You have to attract the right people, you have to train the right people, and you have to retain the right people, all at great expense. Only a little bit of that expense is their wages. A lot of that expense comes, uh, you're in the training, it comes during the attraction, comes during the retention. At both of the world-class organizations, I conducted competitive analysis, and I used outside companies to do the competitive analysis. I needed to know, um, what skilled, trained, skilled and trained men and women who were doing the type of work that my skilled and trained men and women were doing elsewhere. Organizations that otherwise would be attracting the people that I'd paid, the organizations that I worked for paid a great deal to attract them, to train them, and to retain them. Good people are very expensive, far more expensive than the wages that they're paid, far more expensive than the wages that they're paid. And I had to make sure in, in private and nonprofit, we're paying the men and women who work their inequitable wage to ensure that no one, that wouldn't be attracted to go elsewhere, that, first, they wouldn't be attracted to go elsewhere, and second, they would feel productive and supported in their work environment. We wanted to keep them, we wanted them to feel good about where they were working, because nobody is paid enough, and everybody costs far more than their wages. But you know what? When I made, uh, so, at Food for Lane County, at Jerry's, I adjusted the wages, sometimes pretty hefty. Now, hefty isn't a word I would ever use to describe wage increases, to describe how we pay people. Hefty, I, that's not a word I would ever use, but it's one that's been used, and it's been, uh, used also in public testimony today, the word hefty. I don't like it. It kind of riles me a little bit, because, you know, hefty, uh, well, I won't even go into the details of why it riles me, but you know, when I made the adjustments, some of them pretty hefty, far heftier than 14%, in some cases, far, far heftier than 14%, certainly heftier than four cents, and certainly heftier than $1.17 an hour. Uh, but you know, when I made those adjustments, they didn't make headlines in the Register Guard. It didn't make front page top hefty headlines in the Register Guard. And, uh, consequently, I was able to do it kind of under the radar. And the only, the only thing that people cared about is that the same people that had been serving them continued to serve them when I was working at Jerry's, when I was working at Food for Lane County. They wanted to see the same people on the job because they trusted what they were doing to serve them. Very important. And the other thing that they wanted to ensure is that Food for Lane County wasn't gonna go away, and that Jerry's wasn't gonna go away. And in the private industry and nonprofit industry, those are certainly realistic, uh, possibilities, that we see it all around us all the time. But, uh, even though the increases were hefty, people just didn't care. That's not the same in the public sector, and I've never been a human resource director in the public sector. I've been in private, I've been in nonprofit, but never, I've never done your job, Marcia. I've never been in your shoes, 'cause I can only kind of try and look from the outside. And as I think, and as I listen to what other commissioners say today, I'm thinking about, what did I do in private? What did I do in nonprofit that made sure that our customers were being served, that made sure that the people who served them felt adequately compensated and supported in their productive work environment? And, uh, that's, that was the most important thing then, that is the most important thing now. So, I'm gonna listen to other commissioners, and before I make any final statement that I'm gonna make, I'm, I'm gonna bear in mind what happens to the people that we serve, what happens to the organization, what happens to the people who are, who are skilled, who are attracted, trained, and retained to do a superb job, a world-class job of taking care of the people, of serving the people that we serve. Thank you for the work you've done. It's hefty. The work you've done is large, it's huge, and it's bold, and it's strong, and it, uh, is accurate, and we, I can count on the data that you're presenting to us right now as being accurate. Thank you.
Commissioner Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Marcia, a couple of questions here. So, what I'd like to do is go, uh, is take a look, uh, at the report here, and, um, actually, it's not the report, it is the, um, AIS. So, under item, section F, Analysis. And so, it says, "The county is experiencing increasing difficulty recruiting and retaining individuals from many of its non-represented positions." Uh, and then you give the ratio like you, like you presented your report. So, you used, uh, one, two, three, four, looks like five counties as comparables. Uh, did, were you able to ascertain the, uh, as far as, are, are those five counties also having difficulty recruiting and retaining positions, or do you know that?
Yeah, I'm sorry, sir, I don't know that. Yeah.
Because I think that would have been helpful to understand where they are right now. Uh, you know, I, I, because I think when you look at each of the counties and, and where they are in, in relation to, uh, maybe the, the family median income, this type of thing, but also the property tax base. I mean, we have a low rate, we have a low rate here, obviously, and, and then when you look at some of the other counties, uh, one of my friends, Commissioner Cameron, teases me a lot when he talks about Marion County with three bucks or more, or whatever it is, and I'm saying, you know, I usually throw a colorful metaphor back at him on that one. But, um, I, it, to me, it would have been helpful to get an understanding on, you know, what, what the other counties are experiencing right now. Are we kind of in our, our lonesome here? Are, is it, is it the timber-dependent counties that are having a struggle, maybe in relation to some of the other counties that are being compared to? The other one that I think that we have a little bit more closer look would be Jackson. Uh, right now, if you look, if you were to go to Deschutes, uh, Deschutes County right now, it's stunning of what's happened. The, the whole residential construction, uh, industry is, has exploded. And, uh, I think the challenge that, uh, that you, you see there is that while that contributed to the overall property tax rate, many of those folks don't live there permanently. So, they're building, uh, what I was told by two commissioners is that there's a lot of people from the state of Washington, and instead of California, the state of Washington, that are actually building second homes there, but, but that whole construction industry is, I think, helping along with their, their local economy. So, that's a question I had. I just kind of wanna get an idea if you had, had information from the, the other comparable counties, so, okay, great, thanks.
Commissioner Stewart.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Um, Marcia, thank you for the information.
Oh. Did you have something you wanted to state?
Yeah, I didn't mean to, uh, cut you off, Commissioner Stewart, sorry. Just a, a brief response to Commissioner Lichen's question, and just to sort of reiterate and remind the Board why we're using these five comparables. Uh, you may recall that Lane County used to use comparables that included Multnomah County, City of Eugene, City of Springfield, um, and even private sector data was used in the 2013 Fox Lawson Study. So, that, those types of comparables in the past have been used both for represented and non-represented groups, but we've reset that now, and the Board has supported the use of these five jurisdictions, really based on state law, what state law requires in terms of, and we looked at arbitration decisions and, uh, what arbitrators are required to look at, uh, in terms of comparables, and it's like-size counties. Uh, so, we picked the like-size counties compared to Lane County, um, and, and some slightly larger and slightly lower, so you have, uh, that, that tier there. So, I just wanted to share that, that, you know, we're trying to be consistent in the comparable jurisdictions that we use to look at compensation, both for represented groups and for our non-represented, uh, employees.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so, I wanted to talk a little bit about, um, some of the impacts of the organization, and talk about, um, overall 348,000 for the fiscal year 15-16. Can you help me understand, um, in areas like the general fund and, and public works, what that means for, uh, the amount of impact to those two, um, funds? And so, those are the harder ones to adjust, as we know that we're having revenues that are decreasing, so can you help me maybe give you a ballpark?
Sure. Uh, Mr. Chair, the, the gist about the general fund and the road fund in particular. In the current fiscal year, if the Board were to approve, uh, the, the plan as proposed, the general fund impact in fiscal year 15-16 is estimated 153,388 dollars. And the road fund impact in the current fiscal year would be 27,014 dollars.
Okay. And the rest of that, I assume, is probably helping Human Services, some of the other, um, departments that are more fee-based and, and easier to kind of make up a difference.
Enterprise funds, yes.
Okay.
So, the general fund is, is approximately 38.56% of the total cost. Road fund, uh, is about 7% of the total cost. And then the rest is distributed, uh, throughout, uh, various other funds. Youth Services, Lane Events Center, Solid Waste, Fleet Services, Information Services, Community Health Center, Trillian Behavioral Health, Health and Human Services, um, Economic Development, and so on.
Okay. So, as we, um, talk about the potential impacts to the funds and the budgets that we have, so I'm, I'm assuming, you know, this is staff's recommendation to do this, what, what, if anything, are we expecting? Are we able to absorb this and be able to continue the same level of services, or is there something that's gonna need to be adjusted to keep us going?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, uh, the plan is that our departments, our, each fund would absorb the cost, uh, for these adjustments. And what I would say is, is we talked about at the leadership team meeting in August, uh, we actually have had excess laps, uh, in, from last year, and you may ask, "Well, what does that do to?" Well, that's due to frankly, our managers, supervisors, directors of our departments who have responsibly managed, uh, their, the resources that are provided for the county to, to provide critical services, and have been able to identify savings with each, within each of those funds. So, if the Board takes action on this, it would not result in any increased, uh, requirement for any increased resources.
Okay. So, thank you for that information. Um, you know, I've, as a Commissioner, worked closely with different department heads, as, um, you know, specifically in land management, we just did it recently, um, a hiring for a manager's position, and, um, you know, I know that Ms. Miller worked really hard to get out and try to, um, recruit people to consider, um, you know, applying for the position, and really, the challenge was, is that those people that are in that field already are making a considerable amount more money. Um, so, it, it's hard when we're trying to be competitive and trying to put in, get the best people for the position when, when we're not even at the table to be able to, to even offer a competitive salary to try to bring somebody in. So, I know that it's been very challenging in, in land management. I also know it's been challenging in the Health and Human Services Department. I mean, uh, we've had positions go open for months and reposting because we haven't been able to get people to apply. And the word "back" is, is that we're not competitive in some cases. And the Board has, I know, um, over the last year or so, we've been strategic and we've been able to, you know, adjust compensation ranges in specific areas like the physicians. I mean, we couldn't get any physicians, and to be competitive, we had, we had to do it. Uh, we want a physician on staff, we gotta be competitive. Um, so, I, I would say I understand the challenges, and, and we need to, to try to help that. The, uh, other piece is, is that, you know, as we've talked about in the past, we heard Commissioner Farr talk about his private experience and, and that, um, I've tried over the last few years to reach out to some of the folks that I know that operate businesses that are similar stature or have people in the management realms and try to understand their, you know, their management, um, how much, number of employees they manage and, and how much they're getting paid, and it's really difficult to compare apples to apples, uh, especially when we're comparing an orange, because they pay their compensation in different ways. Um, they have different benefit packages, or they offer some sort of a profit sharing and so, maybe all those different things. But by and large, I would say that what I've learned is, is that our salaries for those managers are not in excess of what, um, like comparable positions with management supervisory authority, um, like in road construction, those different things are, are very similar, and, um, if not, a little bit behind. So, I'm comfortable that we're, you know, keeping up with market. You did mention, and, and I, I think it's, I, I need to ask this question, you talked about what the low force that was, we talked about the average. We had a constituent come in here today and talk about, um, somewhere in the excess of, I think I took in 266 to 400 dollars a week increase. Um, what is the, the high increase for, uh, per hour?
You know, I think, um, there is one person, uh, one individual that would see over $2 an hour, just a little over $2 an hour. I believe that is one position.
Could be $16 a day, times five, is well under the 225 that was represented today. So, uh, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. Um, I think that answers my questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Solace.
Thank you very much. Uh, well, first of all, I wanna thank, uh, Mr. Mokraheyski and, um, Ms. Edwards for, um, this information and this effort. I think you mentioned the last time the non-represented employees received an adjustment to their compensation as a result of a study predated the previous study. When was that previous study? That is, previous to the one that was done in?
In 2008, there was a range adjustment based upon a study.
Okay.
In 2013, there was another study, but no action was taken.
Okay. And then, in, we've made some adjustments, such as in the physicians earlier this calendar, but for the vast number of the non-represented employees, there hasn't really been any structural or big look at those positions. Okay. Um, now, some of the higher-end positions, uh, such as, um, department directors, or physicians, or lawyers, uh, there, there might be a comparable, um, an argument, a principled argument that, that there are private sector opportunities, um, for physicians, they can go to a hospital, lawyers can go to a private law firm, um, maybe in the computer area, uh, they can go in the private sector. And in the case of the higher-end administrators, they can go, I used to say across the street, but across the street is now a parking lot, but, um, they could go to a nearby, uh, better financed government. Okay. But none of these comparators, private sector or other local governments, were included in the comparators, and I wanna hear more, I mean, I agree with it, but I wanna hear more of the articulated reason why taking out private sector and big government, uh, big other government, um, was a more fair way of picking those comparators, those Clackamas County, um, Jackson County, uh, Deschutes County, uh, comparators.
By using, I'm sorry. By using these, uh, five comparators, we're trying to create some equity across the county for how we look at compensation. Uh, as we're talking to our represented groups about their compensation, we are using these same five comparators, and we thought it only fitting, only fair, that we use these same five comparators for our non-rep positions.
Okay.
And as Mr. Mokraheyski had alluded to, um, you know, we also checked into the rules around arbitration and what they consider as in like counties.
Well, and, and to be fair, the last study, which did not include these coun, or which did include some of these counties, but really used private sector and local and Multnomah County data, uh, those are not what we use for our, um, uh, strike-prohibited, uh, represented employees and our strike-allowed, um, uh, public and our strike-allowed public sector unions. So these are the ones that we're using for both of those other two. That seems fair to me. If we're going to use it for the represented, we would use it for the non-represented. Okay. Now, there's been a lot of interest expressed about the higher levels of pay, and I think those are in the, what, E categories, as far as the term used in the study, the E ranges, E85, E83, E82, D84. Those are the higher end. And as I get the alphabet here, A is lower than E.
Yes.
Okay. So my concern really is not at the, I want to ask questions about the other end, the folks that are doing the jobs that are listed in the report. And by the way, thank you so much for posting the report. That wasn't part of the original materials, and Mr. Mokraisky got it put up right away, and I think that's helpful. A14 and B21, B22, sounds like I'm playing bingo game here. These are the positions that are in the lower three categories of the study. I'm looking at page 10 on the report that was put on the website. Can you give me an idea of how much money these folks are paid, the A, let's say, A14 to B22? What is the amount of money that these folks are paid?
For the A14, their initial step is $15.18 with a maximum step of $22.77. And then for B22, there's, the first step is 17.46, that's 17.46 an hour, up to a maximum of $26.19 an hour.
On the lower end, is that going to qualify those employees for federal food assistance if they have a family of two people to support by one employee at the A14 level?
I'm sorry, I don't know that.
Okay. But, okay, maybe I'll ask it this way. There are proposals to raise the minimum wage in Oregon. Would any of these positions be affected by a minimum wage policy change?
No, they are over.
They are all over the $15 minimum wage that's being discussed?
Yes.
Okay. Now, there's another aspect of pay equity that I'm interested in exploring. I don't think it was covered in the study. At least I looked for it, I didn't find it. And that is the idea that if there are, if in a large organization, there's a wide range of who is being paid the most money versus who's being paid the least amount of money. And that one aspect of fairness, and it's not necessarily one that I see in this study, but one aspect is to say, the person at the bottom end of the spectrum should be paid some, again, the term fair is used, equitable is used, some percentage of what the highest paid person in the organization is being paid. So the highest paid person in this, in this organization, as I look at the charts, highest paid person is up at the E, or D, no, E. E83, E85, E82, depending on where they are in the salary range. So, you know, a department director in E85, they might not make as much money as someone in E82 if the person in E85 was on the low end and the person in E82 was on the high end. Okay. But at any rate, they're getting paid a lot more than the folks at A14. My question is, is there any thing that you're aware of where we look at a multiple and we say, a multiple of 10 is not fair, a multiple of 2 is not fair, and a multiple of something in between 2 and 10 is more fair? Is that a concept that's being used in equity circles or in human resource circles to try to reconcile the fact that all these folks are working kind of in close proximity, sort of, in some cases, and that we want to keep everybody as happy and motivated as possible? And if there are some people at the lower end who are paid so little relative to the people at the other end, then we have concerns about whether or not we're being, quote-unquote, "fair" or equitable. Is there such a thing? And could you confirm that it wasn't really addressed in this study? And what do you think of the concept?
Well, it's not a method that I've seen used previously, and it's not a method that was used for this study. You know, basically, it was driven off the current salary ranges we have in comparison to our comparator counties. So multiples really weren't used. And what they did was they used a regression analysis to build these proposed ranges, again, to try to make sure that we remain competitive with those comparators.
Yeah, and the diagram on page 19 and page 20 really show how close we are to the median and, in most cases, how far below we are from that median. And that's really what forms the basis of the recommendation here. Okay, I have one question for Mr. Mokraisky, and that is, when you got the report and you took a look at the report, one way to implement this report is just to say, okay, they did the study, they know what they're doing, they did the comparison, it's an arithmetic exercise, there's no multiples of fairness or unfairness, it's just how much are these positions being total package compensated in these comparators? Did you make any deviation from what was recommended from the study itself? What's the difference between what's being recommended versus what the study found?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, we did. We looked particularly at that E-band that you referenced, which really are the assistant directors, the chief deputy sheriff, and the director classifications. In the case of the director classification, the consultant actually recommended a 22% increase to the salary range. Again, there's nobody that is being recommended for a raise of that amount, but in terms of the range for the salary, for the director-level position, the consultant recommended a 22% increase. We didn't think that, I didn't think that was something that was, while the market data justified that adjustment, we didn't think that it was something, frankly, I didn't think, I was not comfortable proposing that to the board. And so we adjusted that. And we said, you know, we can't have any of these range adjustments exceed 15%. We just felt like that was the place that we needed to come in. So we did. In that E-band, we collapsed those recommended adjustments from the consultants. Everything else remained the same.
Would you say that the range adjustment proposed in the study or found in the study was 22%, that it wouldn't be fair to have the 22%, that you're recommending 15%? Because it doesn't sound like it's fair to raise it up that much.
Yeah, I don't know if I would use the word "fair," which is rather subjective, but I wasn't comfortable with it. I didn't think that that was a place that frankly, you know, we have to be in a position, in my opinion, where we can recruit, retain, and advance the best talent. That's really, I mean, selfishly, that's what I'm looking for, is we want to have the best people. We know that we have fewer people to provide the level of service that we need. I want to have the best people in this organization, and we do. I look around at the individuals that we have. We have struggled in terms of recruitment. I can tell you that when we go and recruit for directors and managers and supervisors, right now, we're out recruiting for a finance manager, Mike Barnhart, who took another position in our organization, thankfully. We received, I believe, eight applications, and we had to extend the period of time that that would be open. You know, typically, if you, when we recruit for an office assistant-type position, we can receive, it's not uncommon to receive 100 applications. So we know that we're challenged in terms of recruitment of those areas. And so, again, I think the consultant's recommendation was based on fact. It was statistical analysis of the market, but we didn't think that it was appropriate.
Okay. And then with regard to positions that are below market, where the study and you are suggesting that we change the range for that position, we are changing the positions, as I understand it, in an upward fashion for those positions that are under-market, but we're not doing the same thing where the position is over-market. We're not lowering someone's salary if they are receiving an amount of money that is over what the study shows.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner, the approach that we've taken is to identify any positions that were determined to be competitive in the market, above market, to essentially freeze those positions and say they will not receive a range adjustment, and we will evaluate them further in the course of future market analyses that are done.
But those positions, as I've studied it, those positions where they're over-market are maybe 15% of the total, and it's really 85% that are under the five-county comparators. Is that a fair statement?
I think that's.
I'm not sure of that percentage.
Is it bigger for the ones that are below the five-county mark average as opposed to over the five-county mark average? Okay.
Yes, that's a fair statement.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So I have a couple of questions, and probably just for clarity, and we only have about seven minutes before a time certain. Why are these people non-represented? Can you explain why they're excluded from union representation, just maybe so people might understand, you know, the, what the duties are surrounding these folks?
Right. It's basically pertaining to the type of work that they do. For instance, they make management decisions, they supervise other people for the organization, and they make sure, you know, and I don't want to overstate this, because we all, you know, everyone that works for the county makes sure that the strategic goals are accomplished. But they're really the driver in each of those departments to make sure that every employee in their department knows what those strategic goals are that the board is seeking, and then pushes those goals out to those folks and helps them accomplish them. So, yeah, basically, it's around the types of duties that they do.
Or maybe the information they handle, because, you know, administrative assistant isn't a manager. So why would an administrative assistant not be included in?
Confidential information, those types of things, yes.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at. These folks that are in the non-reps are not only are managers, but they're also the folks that handle very sensitive data.
Yes.
And one of the reasons why they're prohibited from being in a bargaining unit, you know, HR data, you know, it's, these are not the people we want just the run-of-the-mill handling of information. We want people that are going to handle that information with the appropriateness that needs to be handled. We don't want to be the state of Oregon and have data breaches and be paying people's, you know, credit insurance for the next three years. You know, we really want quality people handling this data. We touched on it briefly, but I just want to go over this one more time so it's clear. Because Commissioner Sorensen brought up the idea of equity. At the low end of the scale, the A, Bs, and Cs, the market generally said, we are, what, 4% to 6% below-market in those ranges? Is that a good generalization?
Yeah, their range, their range is going to be receiving a 5% increase in those lower classifications.
Which is, in those lower ranges, basically puts them in-market equity after we adjust their ranges. Now, on the high end, then the further you get towards the E, we chose not to go all the way what the market showed.
Yes.
And we're only adjusting them about 60% towards what the market said they should be at. So when you think about, you know, the folks that aren't, you know, that aren't making the big dollars, we actually corrected them completely to market, and we're taking those folks that actually are making the larger dollars, even though they have probably the greater responsibilities. You know, in fact, we threw a whole bunch more responsibility on our directors because we went from 14 down to nine in the last five years, and threw a whole bunch of responsibility on those folks. And in general, we've been squeezing our management structure down and throwing more duties on our managers and not adjusting compensation. But they're not going all the way to market. So I just want to make sure people understood that. You know, I look at this really as, you know, we do have to be competitive, and these are the folks that can make the multimillion-dollar mismanagement error on behalf of the county. We really want good people. These also are the people that can make the multimillion-dollar cost savings decision. I mean, we didn't get through to our revised healthcare plans with seven bargaining units without the help of the non-rep folks in HR and county administration. We don't do the kind of budgeting innovation we do without the help of the non-rep folks in our budget office. You know, we don't, you know, we don't get to some of these cost savings without the right people in these positions. And I think it's very short-sighted of us to think that we can't be competitive in the marketplace. What I will remind people of is, when we do include private sector in the city of Eugene, that 2013 study actually had a bigger differential between us and market.
Yes.
And that by going to these five comparators, and one of the reasons why we choose these five comparators is what, you know, we would end up in court in binding arbitration on. Plus, there are certain things that only counties have. Only counties have tax assessor's offices. Only counties have sheriff's deputies, you know, only counties have jails, you know, that hold felons. You know, there are some things that, that's all we have to compare with is counties. We don't have a private sector comparator in those places. We don't have a city comparator in those places. We don't have a utility comparator. So I really appreciate the work you've done, and I'm willing to support this because I believe it's the correct thing to do for long-run cost savings in the county. And it's also something that, as Mr. Mokraisky described, it's a small enough piece of our budget. You know, when you look at our half-a-billion-dollar budget, this is not a large percentage of our budget difference. And I think it's, you know, these folks have been patient with us. They've taken 1.5% increase since 2008. I don't think there's a whole lot of people out there that would have been that patient, and they've been willing to sacrifice and provide great service to our county. So with that, is there any further discussion or questions?
I do, yeah. But not before 10:30.
Do we want to, do we want to suspend this item and come back to it after our time certain? Can you hang around till after that?
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right, then what I'll do is I will suspend the discussion on item 8A, and we'll move back to item 7C, which is our discussion on Land County's Proposed Human Rights Equity and Access Plan. And I believe we have Greg Rickoff, our newly-minted, almost, Director of Operations. And I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Rickoff.
Thank you. Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I'll just make a couple introductory comments, and I just wanted to set the stage for this item. We're really pleased to be in front of you to share this new plan for equity, human rights, inclusion, access in our organization and in partnership with our community. And I wanted to remind the board that this is, we're doing this work because it's a priority for the board. The board developed a new strategic plan in late 2014, and in that strategic plan is a specific goal that focuses on both internal and external building of plans to support equity work within our organization and in our community. It's a priority for me and my role, because the board has set it as a priority for me and the goals that you set over the past year. And in order to accomplish the goals that you've established, we have worked hard to engage with our community partners and stakeholders over the past year. We've had numerous meetings. Mr. Rickoff will go through the details of the plan that we are proposing. we are proposing. But what we're going to present to you is the result, not of a couple of people sitting around contemplating what we think is the best thing to do for equity and human rights in our organization. It's the result of what we've heard from our community and from our employees who are actively involved in these areas. And I will say that we don't talk a lot. I've talked a little bit about the equity summits that we do twice a year, and the monthly diversity SAC lunches, and our support for community organizations, but it's really outstanding. And we have a group of folks in our organization who participate in an equity and education committee. Mo Young was here, I don't see her now. I see Mr. Richardson was able to join us. Thank you for being here. And a number, our department heads, managers, and staff that all participate in that effort. So there's a lot of work that Lane County has continued to do somewhat under the radar, but really important that we want to continue to support and build upon. And one of the things that this plan really does is to enhance our outreach into the community, to make sure that we are present in the community, that we're engaging in conversations, that we find formal ways to listen to our stakeholders in the community, and pay respect to everybody. So that's what this plan is about. I'll turn it over to Mr. Rickoff to walk through the details.
Chair Bostovitch, members of the Board of County Commissioners, we were honored to have not only Eric Richardson from the NACP, Michael Carrigan, I see, just returned from Calc. We also have Gene Oregon with us, who is state leader and national leader on accessibility issues and disability rights. So we have very talented leaders here with us today. Very quickly, I wanted to share that this is a concept. We believe this is the correct touch point to make sure that we are getting things right. It is not rich in detail, but if we're working with assumptions that don't work for you, we'd rather know that early on. So this really is a great opportunity here. Some of the assumptions I worked with and working with community members and county leadership to design this is we are building on our strengths and experiences. We have departments that are very active. Health and Human Services, for instance, has been engaged in this work for decades, and we brought in their rich expertise here. We believed, our assumptions included the fact that whatever we do must be collaborative. For us to design something in-house and present it to the community would not be true to an equity and access model. We needed to recognize the financial and staffing constraints that clearly exist. Consequently, we need to make sure that whatever we are doing was a shared lift that had the engagement of all of the county, and that everybody has part of the responsibility to work on these issues, that this did fit with the strategic priorities, and that it's organic in the construction. And by that, I mean, it is better for us to design something and get it right. It's easier to build up and become more actively engaged than it would be for us to design something with belt and suspenders and then kind of ratchet it back. So it's meant to be an entree point, and we'll work from there. First and foremost in this, there will be an advisory body. It would be a council that would work with and report to the county administrator. We heard again and again in our community meetings, and actually meetings within the county, that the work needs to focus on the portfolio of the county administrator. There's certainly opportunity for elected officials to participate and engage in the work, but if this was going to get incorporated into the fabric of the county, the buck needed to stop with the county administrator. We will be asking a task team of elected officials, county staff, and community members to do the design work, to talk about term limits, focus of the advisory board, but that we need to get it started and get it focused correctly with the county administrator. A major piece that we heard again and again was institutionalizing equity efforts, that what we did from recruitment, selection, retention of employees, to purchasing of services, to the advisory work that occurs throughout the county, as well as just the full-service delivery, that that needed to be worked, developed with an equity lens, that that needed to be tested on whether or not it really was serving all of Lane County community members. And so part of that would be a tool where departments would report back, would give themselves a grade that would then be tested with the advisory body and with the community to see if they were actually hitting their goals around access. Improving recruitment, selection, retention, and advancement was a very clear theme. Work is already in progress to address the recruitment and selection component of that, and I'll let the county administrator elaborate. But in addition to that, there needed to be a clear message that everyone was evaluated on whether or not they were, their efforts contributed to equity and access. That piece has actually had momentum as well, and with the new evaluation system in place, it's going to come up in everybody's evaluation. What are they doing to help make Lane County work for all? In addition to that, kind of a bold move step, requiring Lane County employees to have a minimum of three hours of education every year that looks at equity and access work. It would be tailored, we will need to do some work, human resources will be looking at this front and center, to design appropriate for everybody's service, what that might look like, so there will be some enrichment going on. But we need to include a constant reminder that we are here for everyone. Finally, and I know this is truly important for the NACP, engage and Calc, I think for all of our community partners, that we engage community partners as an equity and service resource, that we are full partners, that we attend milestone events within communities, that we are responsive when incidents of bias and discrimination occurs, that we really maintain the partnership. We don't try to duplicate what is being done so very well by nonprofit, social justice organizations, that we are a viable, active partner, supporting the events. I think Alicia Hayes gave a great example of Latino health service event this Friday, where Lane County will feature prominently. We'll have information tables, and we'll be actively involved in serving the Latino community around health issues. Just one example of the kind of thing that we need to be actively looking at. Those are the five components, broad brushstrokes, details. Should we get this right and be on the right track? We'll be coming back with further details on exactly how we expect to get this work done. At this point, we want to know, did we get the framework and the overall concept correct?
Commissioner Farr. Thank you, Mr. Rickoff. You know, as I sat here, I reflected on the journey that we've been on together, you and I. This started in 1995, when Mayor Ruth Bascom appointed me to the City of Eugene Human Rights Commission. And I remember the day I met you, it was quite an interesting experience. I sat in the Human Rights Commission meeting, and I heard about things that I'd never heard about before, in terms of equity and in terms of access. And since then, it's been a long and journey and a learning experience for me every step of the way, and I'm really pleased, Mr. Mokrheyski. I'm really pleased with the progress that we've made in this direction. You know, when you first, when we first hired you, I happened to be the chair of the board, and you and I spent quite a bit of time in those initial days and weeks talking about your goals, your personal goals. And you outlined, you personally outlined goals surrounding equity, surrounding access, and I enthusiastically said, "Right on." And really, from your first day on the job, you've been working toward what we're hearing today. And it's been a lengthy, lengthy process, and once again, I'm very pleased with the process. I'm looking at notes that I've taken back to as early as February of 2013, that, of input that I've been getting. And I'm also looking at two large meetings that, Mr. Mokrheyski, you convened. And, Mr. Rickoff, you were in those meetings at the time you worked for the University of Oregon, doing much of the same type of work that you're describing right now to us, when you were working for the University of Oregon and for the city of Eugene prior to that. In those meetings, on our June 16 meeting, I'm just going to read a list of some of the folks that you invited and who attended. Anselm Villanueva was there, Linda Hamilton-Herman, who works in our, in this very building that we're in. Marsha Edwards was there, of course, Alicia Hayes, George Russell was there, and you were, of course, Senator Mokrheyski. And another meeting that we had included some more, more people beyond that, Mr. Rickoff, Carmen Urbina, Philip Crasco, Sarah Chinskey was at that meeting, and thank you, Sarah, for all of your input that you provided to me, research you provided to me. Marshall Peter, Michael Kinnison, Emilio Hernandez, Linda Hamilton-Herman, Thomas again. Mr. Richardson, you were at that meeting. Alicia was there. Michael Carrigan, you were at that meeting. Mo Young, as you mentioned, Aaron Rollin, and a vast number of people gave a lot of input. We sat for a long time in the room upstairs, hearing what people, the people describe obstacles that we've experienced at Lane County and in this local area in general regarding access and regarding equity. And taking all of the no's and bringing them forward to this point, it's not been an easy journey, and I really commend you highly on it. I think, based upon my experience and based upon my participation, I believe you've taken all of the input, and you've given us not a final outcome by any stretch of the imagination, but a point on the route toward a final outcome, a point on the route to where we can stand back and look at Lane County and say, yes, this is an equitable organization that provides equal access and provides access to people who deserve and need the access in the county. I'm very pleased. I'll say that again, I'm very pleased with the progress that we've made to this point, and I'm very pleased with the work that you've engaged in together and that we've all engaged in. And that's, you know, the input that I've received's been pretty positive so far toward this. You know, when I joined the Eugene City Council, I replaced Bobby Green. Bobby Green's been a strong voice through the years to me regarding access and equity. When I left the Eugene City Council, I was replaced by Greg Evans. Greg, through the years, has also been a strong voice to me, personal voice, both my neighbors, both my very close neighbors. And I, once again, bravo, good job on not the final outcome, because we're not there yet, but on the point we are toward our final outcome. Good work. Thank you.
Michelle Iken.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I would also like to say, it's great having Gene Oregon here this morning. Thanks, Gene, for being here. And Gene Navia and I have had the opportunity to serve on the Area Commission on Transportation together, and I got to tell you, he's quite a gift. And he just recently, and something I really appreciate, we just had a conversation a few weeks ago about accessibility to our parks, and he sent me a letter. I sent the letter off to both Marsha and Mike, and that very day, Marsha Miller actually responded back to me that day and said it was a very well-written, very articulate letter. And I think what it was, is the information about accessibility to our parks. So I would agree, Gene is just an incredible asset to our community. Thank you for, I think where we're going down this road is very good, and I really appreciate it. One of the things I'd like to touch on quickly, and you mentioned the, could you again talk about who you have reached out to within the Latino community? And there's a couple of things here I want to mention, and in particular, when I was first elected as mayor, we knew that the Latino population was growing significantly in the city of Springfield. And one of the things we did at the city is we made sure to have bilingual folks in every department, because when I found, one thing I realized is that there was an explosion, literally, of small business startups, not just in downtown, but throughout the city, of Latino-owned businesses. And one of the challenges, of course, was the language barrier. How do you get your building permits? How do you go through to get a traffic study? You had to make sure you had key individuals in each of those departments that we had so that not just, and I think what happens is that people generalize, and they think about, oh, you know, public safety. It's so much, so much larger than that. And so what we found out is having key individuals in each of those departments so that if the language barrier came up, you'd have people that'd be able to communicate, make sure that they would get their permits, if they had to go through a traffic study, if they had to do these things. And it was so fun to watch and see the businesses that were starting up and providing jobs for our communities, or in particular in the city of Springfield, because that's obviously where I served as mayor. But it was so, so interesting to see that happening. So who have we reached out to as far as the, from the Latino community or? And I will say, one of the great assets I had in the city of Springfield, unfortunately moved to Texas, that was Mark Molina. And Mark was great. He was really one of, a real terrific asset for me personally as mayor. I could call on him constantly, to the point where he became a member of our budget committee, actually ran for city council one time, lost to Hillary, but Wiley, who obviously has been a good city councillor in Springfield over the years too. But maybe just comment quickly on that direction.
Well, Juan Carlos Vallee has received this material, and we've had several attempts. He had to cancel our last meeting, so he hasn't had a chance to weigh in on this. And we look forward to getting his read, particularly given his leadership in LULAC. Carmen Urbina has been involved in this process. Oh, Carmen Urbina has been involved in this process. I know I'm going to be missing folks. Our own internal equity committee committees have been looking at this, so, and I cannot speak to the status of language skills in all the departments. I know for many of the departments, it's taken very seriously, and there's actually compensation elements involved for those who are using their language skills as part of their service to the county. But I can look at it and get you more comprehensive information about who all has had a chance to weigh in at this point.
And that's fine. I appreciate it. What I just really want to say is, I like where we're going, and it's, I think we're doing, this is a great direction, and looking forward to continued updates. So appreciate it. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to start out by saying thank you to Commissioners Sorensen and Farr. I mean, the entire board made this a priority through our strategic planning, but I really think through both of their leadership, Commissioner Sorensen committed to this activity, and also Commissioner Farr's activity in meetings and bringing people to the table. I appreciate it. I also wanted to say thank you to the administrator. You know, being on the board here 11 years, I've seen us create a commission, we've done different things, and I really think that you took the time necessary to establish some relationships with individuals to understand, you know, some of the pros and cons of what we've done in the past. And I think you're proposing today a great step forward, and I'm supportive of it. I think that this has to be done right, because I don't want to be back here again, you know, having really tough conversation about how, you know, the committee's not functioning right, or we're not representing the individuals that need representation in our community or a place, a safe place to go to. So it's really about establishing trust and doing it right, and I really feel good about that process. I mean, it's taken a long time to get here, whether it's been difficulties to connect with individuals that are important and we need to connect with, or whether it's just really doing it right, and so I appreciate that. There was one comment this morning by Mr. Carrigan that I just wanted to touch on because it's not part of the, at least I don't think it's part of the presentation today, was you are working on a potential staff person that can coordinate all this. Is that correct? Because it was mentioned, I think, a halftime position to try to do that. So I want to, I want to communicate to Mr. Carrigan and other folks that we are, that's going to be part of the component to make this successful. Is that correct?
Yes. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Stewart, we...
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Stewart, we there are two staffing components. One commitment we've made is certainly, you know, to try to do this with existing staff resources. But one thing we heard consistently from our community partners was the need to identify individual people. So who are the people who are the point, the points on this? Let's not divvy the work up among 20 different folks, that there needs to be some accountability and identification for who's responsible. So that we've really divvied up the responsibilities here, in addition to myself and Mr. Rickoff, who will be actively involved from a leadership standpoint in supporting and administering a lot of this work. We took a vacant but funded position in Human Resources and reclassified it to be a recruitment coordinator. We're currently recruiting for that recruitment coordinator, so we have not filled it yet. Where Ms. Edwards is committed, and we all are committed to making sure we hire the right person for that role. Within the definition of that position is to focus on outreach into the community and improve the diversity of our workforce and access to jobs in Lane County. So that's a portion of the work. And the other portion, we currently have, we've talked about Mo Young, who's one of our outstanding employees in Lane County in Health and Human Services. She, we pay in county administration for a portion of her time to support internal equity work. We're going to continue that, but one of the things we're looking at is how do we enhance that role and make sure that there's additional staff support for the advisory body and for other work that we're going to do. So we have not finalized how that's going to happen, but we understand that that's certainly in need, and we're committed to making sure that we do it within existing resources.
Yeah. And I just like the final thing I'd like to say is, is that, you know, this, to me, is incredibly important from the standpoint that, you know, as our county is transitioning and providing more services in different areas, just just take, for instance, the Health and Human Services with our federally federally qualified health clinics. We're serving now over 90,000 people in this community through those clinics. And those people are probably the most diverse and the most challenged in our communities. And, you know, if we can't be the best that we can in connecting with them, they're not getting the good the service that they deserve, and we're not and we're not doing our job. And so as we as we understand that that it's important for us to be able to recognize, I mean, it's hard for Fay Stewart to connect with somebody when you don't understand period about what they're dealing with or or, you know, what their challenges are, because I haven't experienced them firsthand. So it's important that we recognize that and be able to address it. And it's it's just like our public safety system, whether it's your adult adult system or this youth system. You know, youth system, we are the authority for the entire county, but yet we have partnerships with all the other jurisdictions that bring us individuals. They may have their own programs, and so it's going to be critical that that we're not duplicating, but we're marrying our program together with theirs so that we can be the most effective to and not see some of the the challenges that we're facing, or help us to better address the challenges that we're facing so that we can be a better-serving government. So this is critical, and I'm very thankful and very supportive of what you're presenting here, and we'll see it move forward. So thank you.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Just wanted to make a few comments in support of this. First is that, you know, we've had a Lane County Human Rights Commission, we've had a Lane County Human Rights Committee, we've had a Lane County Human Rights Advisory Committee, we've had the board vote five to zero to establish some or all of these, we've had a three to two vote to abolish the most recent one. So we've had a number of conflicts on the board about this. And so one way to lower the tension, I think, is to is to have this advisory group meet with the county administrator. And that the and 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 given that I've been involved in all these different, you know, methods by which we might improve the human rights environment within Lane County, and they've all had pros and cons, I'm in favor of trying this. I will say that, having attended a large number of these meetings in the past, that when we had a structure to attend meetings, that that there is a tension between doing something for the employees of Lane County and making the employees and future employees feel that they are being given a fair shake in the application process, recruitment process, retention process, and that they're being treated fairly. And there's a tension between that, which is a huge challenge all by itself, and what is going on outside of the county government. How are people being treated by Lane County government? Are there issues among the population of Lane County that Lane County government should be involved in? So this tension between what I might call inside and outside is a challenge for the new group as well. And one thing that I did in, and I was kind of on the drumbeat of outside, kind of on the drumbeat of outside myself for quite a while. And so I had a meeting with a number of leaders, and they really reminded me that, and this is because we're in a sort of post-recession period where some people are recovering from this recession and others aren't recovering from this recession. So they really reminded me that this business of fairness in who we recruit, who we promote, who we retain, really does anure to the benefit of people outside of the county government. So I would just say that, you know, keeping in touch, and I guess this goes mostly to Mr. Mokrhyeski, keeping in touch with this council is a crucial thing, but also the tension and being aware of the changing attitudes about the tension between what is going on or not. I recall very vividly a property owner who put up a swastika on their property in rural Lane County, and the board at the time not having an advisory committee. And I ended up writing something about, yes, I favor the freedom of expression and speech, but I also retain my own freedom of expression to say I didn't like the display of the Nazi swastika on private property. Not that the government could do anything about that, not that the government should do anything in a regulatory way, but it seemed to me that speaking out against this type of hate speech was also worthwhile. So my point is that you've got to do both this interior work and this exterior work. And that it's gratifying to me to see Mr. Oregon, Mr. Richardson, and Mr. Carrigan all here saying that this is something that they would like the board to do and support. So I agree.
Thank you. Well, there's not a whole lot more to add to what the other four commissioners have said. I will say that I do support the plan, and as Mr. Mokrhyeski is our sole employee, you know, we have to remember that, that the task group advising him is basically advising our most direct employees. So I think that, but I do want to mention that us five older white males sitting up here are actually the ones that are ultimately responsible for human rights, equity, and access in Lane County. Were the ones that swore an oath of office to affirm not only our state's constitution but the U.S. Constitution that protects those rights. So ultimately, having Mr. Mokrhyeski report to us on these issues and advising us is not any in any way diminishing our responsibilities aboard to protect those rights and to maintain that that equity and access throughout Lane County, not only internally for our employees, because if we maintain it internally, hopefully, they're also dealing externally with people with that in mind. But, you know, you know, we have to, you know, that is our job. You know, that's really probably one of our primary responsibilities is protecting our citizens' rights. And I feel very strongly about, you know, that responsibility, and I think this plan will support our ability to do so, because then we will be getting some advice from outside groups. You know, we do, we're only five guys, and we all have our own experiences we're bringing to the board. Yeah, I think people might be surprised about how varying those experiences really are, even though they might see us as a homogeneous group when they look at our faces, that would probably belie how different our backgrounds and upbringings are and what diversity actually is represented up here, just in the five of us. We still, in the diversity of the five of us, does not match the diversity of our community. And I think getting input from all outside groups to this task group and having that, you know, the plan that you're marching forward with, I think, is really a great way of making sure that we don't miss something in our duties to protect those rights and that equity and that access. So I fully support the plan as proposed, and look to see if there's any further comments from the board. I think you've got your direction. Thank you for all the hard work. I know that, and I do want to echo Commissioner Stewart and thank Commissioner Sorenson and Commissioner Farr, particularly Commissioner Sorenson, because this has really been one of his pet projects, is to push this forward. And I know there's been a lot of work in the background done by both those commissioners. I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, I'm going to jump us back to item AA and ask Ms. Edwards to come back And I think I was kind of trying to quickly wrap up my own comments, but I want to jump back into my own comments, because there was one thing I did not get to in trying to hurry up for the time certain. And that's to also let people understand that this does not include the commissioners.
No, it doesn't. It does not.
And do you know of when the last time the commissioners' salaries were adjusted?
It's been several years. I'm sorry, I don't have that information with me.
Wasn't it 2006? I'm looking to my older board members. Or longer term, I shouldn't say older, because Commissioner Stewart's younger than me.
I may be younger than you, too.
In my tenure, we did have a deferred comp increase of 2% in 2006, and that sense has been given back. I think the actual salary was done back in 2004, I believe. Is that correct, Commissioner?
I really don't remember.
It's been long enough ago that they've forgotten. And in the one little piece that we added, we took back. We've also eliminated our staff. We've also reduced our office budgets and our contingency fund. So there is no benefit to the commissioners of approving this plan. I just want to make sure that that's absolutely clear to the folks in the public that might have thought that we that this is some self-serving action we're taking. This is about getting good staff and keeping good staff and having an equitable pay plan. I mean, we just talked about equity, and this is about also having an equitable plan. So I think, Commissioner Farr, you had some further questions to discuss.
I do. You know, reflecting on my number of years of public service, my first, the last time I received a pay raise as a as an elected official was in 2001, when my pay for the as a Eugene City Council went from nothing to a monthly stipend of $1,000. So that was the first six years of the council, there was no pay. So, you know, we don't do this. Anyway, as Commissioner Bozovic said, this is nothing to do with county commission wages, and it's nothing to do with representative employees, the many different unions that we have regular discussions with. But, you know, as I as I look at the proposal that you've made, and I said earlier, your data is absolutely accurate. I trust it completely, and I trust the process that we went through. It's a very similar process to the ones that I've always gone through when I looked at pay equity or the, you know, the competitive equity of pay. And and really, if this were a private organization like Jerry's, people would only care that the people who served them yesterday were going to be serving them tomorrow. If this were a nonprofit like Food for Lane County, people would only care that the great people who are doing the work to get, you know, six pounds of food on the table for every dollar they donate, they would only care that those people were continuing in their work. And they would also care only that the organization stayed around. But that's not the way it is. And the way it is with with the Lane County is that we made a big headline, for whatever reason, it was a big headline that swayed a great many people's opinion of the action that we're taking today. And was it fair? Well, Mr. Mokrhyeski said fair is subjective. Subjective is, you know, absolutely, fair is subjective. But did it give people a full range of accurate information regarding the regarding the process that we have gone through to get to this point today and regarding the decision that we are making today? No, not even close to giving them a full perspective. And I will tell you that every single person that I've spoken to about it, whatever they may say to me, they say, well, there are no Social Security colas this year. It's true, that's a fact, there aren't. And people say, well, the economy is flat, or I didn't, I only just heard about this four days ago from the Register Guard. You know, all of these things are also very true. And each of those people, when I spoke to them and explained the details that this is arranged from, you know, some of the some of the directors are only getting four cents an hour raise, and the average is only $1.17 an hour, it's not the 270-some-odd dollars, or it's not the 14%. The people came to me and said, why are you giving everybody a 14% raise? That's what they read. You know, that maybe wasn't what was printed. If you read the entire article, that wasn't what was printed. That is what they read. Consequently, right now, Ms. Edwards, there are a lot of people out there who, not in the room, nobody's in the room watching this, but there are a lot of people who are paying close attention to the decision that we make today. And because of that, it's a very, it's a decision that has a great deal of gravity, and it's one that each time I have a one-on-one discussion with somebody about it, they say, oh, yeah, I understand. But I can't have a one-on-one discussion with every single person. The closest we get to that is it comes from people who buy ink by the barrel. And people who buy ink by the barrel can blast out their information in a way that I cannot even scratch the surface of. And so unfortunately, I have to personally bear witness to the folks that I speak to on a regular basis as to why we're doing this. And there are about 360,000 people in Lane County, and of the people that I speak to on a regular basis, obviously, I don't come close to speaking to everybody. And I'm afraid, I fear that people will believe that we're not doing responsible work with the public trust, with the public dollars, if we make this decision at this point in time. Now, based upon the fact that everything you've given to us and the process that you've gone through is accurate, not everybody believes that. Not everybody, in fact, very, very few people out there believe that, based upon the hefty raises that were that were blasted out in the headlines. Consequently, I'm not very comfortable right now that people would trust that we are being very responsible if we if we if I vote yes on this, if we pass this pass this pay raise. Now, I'm looking at people, I'll pick out individuals in the county, and I'm not going to mention by name, people who are now doing jobs that formerly three people, each one of whom received more pay than the one person is getting, are doing the same three jobs. Do these people deserve and need a raise after nine years of not getting raises? Of course they do. Of course they do. Any reasonable person who looks at it with the equity lens, with the with the fairness, subjective fairness lens, will say, yes, you're right, they do. That being said, however, there are people out there who really don't believe that since they've not received a raise, nobody else should receive a raise based upon the fact that their tax dollars are paying for it. It's a horrible situation that we've been placed in here, because I see the folks that we're talking about every single day. I look in their eyes every single day. And I know people who are doing the work of three folks for less than any one of those folks should be paid, but they're doing works of work of three people. They're working overtime on their own dime, on their own time to get the work done. They're making sure that tomorrow, when our customers come and expect customer service from us, it's the same people giving the customer service tomorrow that gave it to them yesterday. All of that is very, very important. That being said, ink by the bucket, I can't argue with it. You know, it's difficult for me to justify to a lot of people out there who I will never get to speak to without a without a different process. It's very hard for me to justify that this is the right decision, that this is efficiency in government that people expect and demand. Based upon that, I'm not going to be able to support the motion today. Based upon that, I'm not going to be able to support the motion today. I'm not going to be able to support the motion today. And what I would prefer to see is the entire, is it to go through a regular scheduled budget process where the entire Budget Committee looks at the discussion that we are, we have had in private, some of us have had one-on-one in private regarding this. We didn't hear about it four days ago. We heard about it quite some time ago as you were going through the process. And I'm guessing that each one of us, I don't, I've not spoken to anybody else about this, that each one of us said, "Yeah, good process. Like it. Go forward. It's fair, it's equitable. Folks are not getting paid for the work they do." And I'm worried that they're not going to be here to serve our customers tomorrow because the Chutes County is going like this, or because the City of Eugene is beckoning them, or because private industry is beckoning them. We've trained them, we've recruited them, they're skilled, we want them to be here. And my vote today is doing nothing to solidify that. With that being said, I would prefer that we go through a regular budget process where the entire Budget Committee has a chance to weigh in on this and where more public input, people standing at that microphone right there may be able to give us more direct public input. And so my vote is a no today.
Mr. Sorensen.
Well, I don't see that perspective or that comment as being contradictory to what is being suggested. You know, the, it's very common for us to receive a report and either schedule a public hearing or get the Budget Committee called in if we're going to make some decision that the Board is, you know, got some mixed feelings on or that the public might have mixed feelings on. So I would not be opposed to, you know, moving to doing, I don't want to have this be postponed forever. I want to see a process of moving this toward a decision. But I thought it was useful to have the report put on the website and I referred a number of people to that. I think they were pretty impressed with the information that was conveyed in the report. And as we heard earlier today, the recommendation is not as, not what the report fully recommends. So I don't think we, you know, are under any obligation to do it today. We did get some public comment today. You know, we, people are aware that we get public comment and we can get public comment. They're not holding back on giving their opinions just because we haven't said we're holding a public hearing, but it might bring a little more unanimity to the Board's decision and it might also, and for fear that somehow this is going to result in a process of not adjusting those salaries. I think one thing that we could do that would certainly be clear is we're going to have some point in time that these salaries go into effect. And that could be, you know, in the future or it could be in the past. Now, what was your current recommendation on that topic?
January 1.
January 1 of what year?
Of '16.
Okay, of '16.
Yes.
So these raises, if they were to be voted in two seconds from now, would not be effective until January anyway.
Exactly.
So to me, you know, if we're going to adopt that view and have those come in, then we could certainly get the perspective of the Budget Committee or County Finance or other people that otherwise haven't yet been publicly asked, what's the effect of this? I feel like, you know, the idea of having a reasoned decision where we're all getting information the same, the public gets the same information. I've been on the Board long enough to know the difference between a big response and a smaller response and so, and the idea that sensationalizing a government decision, you know, may work in the short term and may work that somebody wants to put a big headline, "County to Raise Salaries," you know, and I, my first phone call was, "How could you raise your own salary?" And I think Commissioner Bozovic dealt with that by clearly asking, "Did this apply to the elected officials in the county?" And it doesn't. So I don't see a need to jam this and I, I think that the methodology used in the study was better than the previous one. I thought the previous one was slanted toward the upper-income people. I didn't like that. I'm glad it didn't come to a vote. I expressed my perspective at the time that I didn't think it was fair to compare our union employees to the Chutes and Clackamas and Marion and Jackson County, but to compare our upper-income people to higher wage environments. So I thought this was a fairer thing. You answered my question about the impact of a minimum wage on the folks at the lower end of the pay structure. But I, so I've had a lot of my questions answered, but I also agree that, you know, government governs with the consent of the governed.
So let me address a couple of those things real quick. First, I want to ask a quick question. I'm kind of aware that we have one, two, three, four, maybe five board meetings left in the year. I think, is that, is that correct?
Six, three and three.
Three and three? It's six, it's still, and I'm pretty aware just from the Agenda Committee that we've got some pretty full board meetings coming up. So one of the things about delay is delay for how long. But the second question I have is, what's the lead time that Finance and HR need to actually put this as a, into, this is going to be when the paycheck get written according to the new salary scales?
Yeah, you know, it always depends on how much staff you can devote to it. But I would say if we knew by December, that would be ideal.
So probably at least a month and then when we think about, that's also Christmas holidays, end of year, people are trying to use, you know, leave time that is use or lose, all that good stuff that happens at the end of the year. It might even be worse than that and then November's got Thanksgiving in it. You know, so if we're thinking about a January at one implementation time, this is actually the correct time to be making the decisions around this. Second, you know, there is some discussion of bringing the Budget Committee involved. This is not a Budget Committee responsibility. If you read the Charter and you read the code and you read the manual, this is solely a Board responsibility to set compensation. You know, it is directly our thing. Second, think about what collective bargaining process is. Do we hold public hearings when we're going to approve an offer to our bargaining units? Do we have any public process before we make that offer? Isn't that, most of that done in executive session? So now you're asking for us to hold a public hearing and bring in a lot of public input to set compensation for our nonrepresented employees. Is that an equitable process? Is that a process that's similar to those folks that are in collective bargaining? And one of the things we're trying to set up here was a process that's similar and equitable to our collective bargaining units for our nonrepresented employees. You know, by using the same comparisons, you know, doing a market study, trying to find out what the actual market is, we've gathered a lot of great data here. I don't think that data's going to change. You know, I think one of the things we, our staff has made a recommendation and I echo the recommendation is they didn't go all the way on the top end. They waited this to be more, you know, bringing the lower-end salaries up to market, but holding the top end back, recognizing that the top end probably can weather not being at market a little bit better. Although, you know, I still have some concerns about that top-end talent is really important to the county. You know, those are the folks that, you know, like I pointed out, it was the HR folks and all that that saved us millions in the renegotiation of our health insurance with our bargaining units. And it's a repeatable millions of dollars a year. Yet we're talking about a salary plan that might cost us $800,000 in a full budget cycle for the folks that were saving us millions a year. You know, that, you know, that's, that's the short-sightedness I see in this. So, you know, it is a Board responsibility. It is not typical that we make some giant public process out of any other compensation decisions we make in Lane County, other than the elected officials because that's spelt out. You know, so I don't see a need to delay past today. I don't think we're going to get any different data. I've gained a lot of input in the last several days. You know, and that's one of the reasons why we publish our agendas of the Thursday before our Tuesday meetings, is so we get that input. I don't think there's been any lack of input from the public. We may have only had one person here for public comment, but I can guarantee I've had a whole lot more email and I do participate on Facebook and also even the Register Guard's Discussion Board, you know, to talk about this. But, and I do echo Commissioner Farr's comment that once I was able to talk people down from where they were by reading only the headline in the Register Guard, which was very deceiving, to what we're actually doing and the fact that those folks are just going to move to the next step and it's going to take them three years to top out if they were already topped out, you know, and those folks haven't received raises hardly since 2008. So when you look at that 14.9% and the 1.5 COLA and go back and divide it out from between 2008 to 2019, when they fully could get to the top step and look at the total percentage per year, it's about 1% a year. You know, people go, "Oh, that's not very much." You know, that's the kind of things that, you know, unfortunately, you know, county considering hefty raises of 14.9%, half the time, that's all people read. Even though it wasn't considering raises of 14.9%, it was considering salary range adjustments of up to 14.9%. It's just, you know, after you talk to the people, they seem to understand it. You know, some, there's some people you'll never convince. You know, they just, they're, you know, people that, you know, that will always think government shouldn't be getting any raises, any increase, they don't need any more taxes, but they're the first people that pick up the phone and call us, you know, when they need service. So we have that issue that there's always going to be people that don't like whatever we do. So I'm ready to make a decision today. I don't think there's any benefit in postponing the decision. I actually think it's a detriment because, one, what are we sending a message to our nonrepresented employees at this point? Two, we've got bargaining coming up with other bargaining units. If we're not going to consider increases for our non-reps, are we stating that our opening position with our bargaining units is 000 on COLAs? And we're going to just completely ignore market adjustment and when we start bargaining with our next bargaining units? You know, and is that even legal under PECPA and state law? Yeah. Think about the ramifications of not taking action on this. Think about the process we take for collective bargaining units.
You know, I'll just put this way. I do think a reasonable period of time to consider the materials isn't, and I don't mean by the Board, I mean by the public, isn't unreasonable. Even in collective bargaining, we don't take a vote on approving it until the bargaining unit has taken a vote on it. So we don't, we don't take the vote on approving the contract until the other side does. Now, in this instance, we have had this out for public review for, you know, five or six days and I think that a lot of the concern among those who don't want to do this hasn't been addressed by the information that's out there. But I hear, you know, at least some perspective on the Board that says, "Well, you know, want to get more information, want to, want to find out what that is." I personally am okay with the vote, but I'm trying to be responsive to the concern that we, you know, put it off. Maybe putting it off for a week is something that somebody would be in favor of doing. I don't know. I won't make that motion because I don't know if that's what people want to do or not.
Mr. Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to go back to my original question. And I need you to understand, I've been an employer for many, many years. And not only was I an employer, my father was an employer, my grandfather was an employer, my great-great-great, you name it, all the way back. I need to understand, why are we experiencing the difficulty recruiting and retaining? Are these other counties experiencing that same issue? Is it a certainty issue? Is it because we're a timber county? I mean, why is this, why is this occurring? I need that information. It would be extremely helpful. We made the decision on the public health side, you know what, we had certain comparables on the retention piece compared to others in that profession. So I didn't have an issue of raising the bar as far as our docs, nurses and that type of thing were concerned, not at all. I didn't even, because of where we were. We were going to have, I mean, we were, we were going to be in an issue where this is dealing with people's health. So I got to tell you, I'm, from my perspective, I'm not quite prepared to make, to vote yes on this. If we could delay this, do we have a board meeting next week? Are we down?
We do.
Is there a way that we can just get this information and bring it back to the Board in one week? This would be extremely helpful to find out from those other counties. Are they having the same issue? Is it a certainty issue? This is all, this is all I'm looking for, really, because, you know, is it, is it just pay? Or is it, you know, I don't know if I want to become a deputy sheriff here at Lane County. That job may not exist tomorrow, but I can go to Washington County and I'll have a job there for 20 years. This is something I think would be extremely helpful to make this decision. I would just, my suggestion, I would like to delay this one week unless, unless the votes are here, unless the Board's prepared to move forward on this. But that's just my thoughts. Give us a week, find out that information, bring it back and see where we are. I need to know, is this just pay only? Is this a pay issue? Or is our other counties that we're being compared to, are they experiencing the same issue of retention anyway? It would be helpful.
Mr. Stewart.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask Commissioner Farr, is a week long enough? That would put us, Commissioner Bozovic is going to be gone, I believe, on the 10th, the following week. So it's either next week or potentially December 1st. I don't think Christine Moody's here, maybe she could speak to the legality of calling the Budget Committee together. I don't know that legally she's shaking her head, legally we can't do that. So it's a matter of, I guess, trying to get the correct information out to the citizens about really what the magnitude of this is. Is a week enough time or does it mean December 1st? And maybe Marsha might be able to talk about if you're going to gather additional information with our sister counties to try to answer. Commissioner Lichen, I mean.
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Stewart. I'll answer it. I'm not certain that a week would be enough time for me to tell you the truth. I think that my concern really surrounds at short notice to the public and a lot of people haven't had a chance to react yet. And do we, do we have a responsibility to allow people to react to internal pay increases? Well, I don't think that it's a stated responsibility or a written responsibility, but do we have an obligation, a personal obligation to do so? I think so. I think openness in government is something that people expect and I think that if they raise a question surrounding openness in government, it's something that I would like to come a little bit closer to addressing. So Commissioner Stewart, I would, I think that probably one week wouldn't make a difference for me. I think, I think having the vote next week, I don't think there's an opportunity for me to counter the opinion that's already been stirred up among people who, I really want them to understand the deliberative process and the good job that this government does. And I don't know And I don't know that they're going to have that understanding if we vote today or a week from today, if we vote yes today or a week from today.
Marcia, do you know what timeline that you might need to get information to Commissioner Lichen?
Um, you know, I, basically, it's, it's how quickly we can contact folks and how quickly they get back to us. So, ideally, if we're able to talk with someone in each of these HR departments to have that retention conversation, then it is doable in a week, ideally.
So, I guess with that information, Mr. Chair, this is an important decision. And if we put it out for three weeks to December 1st, or actually, I guess that's a month, we may not get any more commissioners involved, but I think that it's important to get information, give them the opportunity. And I understand we have busy schedules, but hopefully we won't need two hours of deliberation to make a decision at, at the next point. So, I would ask that the agenda team consider moving this to the December 1st, Tuesday, December 1st meeting. And that still gives, I think, staff a month to implement, depending on the decision, if it's to move forward or not.
So, first, I, I just want to make a couple of things clear. Mr. Mokrahis, can you meet with each of the commissioners on a regular basis, don't you? Have you been keeping each of us updated on this process?
Yes.
Has any commissioner stated to you they felt this needed to be made a public process, or they felt that there wasn't, you know, that there wasn't adequate public review of the consultant or the process, as you described it to them in those regular meetings?
No.
Thank you. I just want to make that clear, that this is a decision being made today in reaction to a bad newspaper article.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think you're going to change. You know, we don't control that newspaper. I think delaying this a month, a week, a day, you're going to get the same sort of coverage, and you'll have the same general reaction because there'll be the same people that will only read the first three lines. You know, on our collective bargaining decisions, usually the first time the public knows about it is when we actually do place it on the board's agenda for a vote, not when we make the offer. And that's usually after the, the unions voted, and that's usually the same time period, about four or five days. There'll be an article maybe in the Guard that the board is going to vote on the contract for Ask Me at their next meeting, and it includes ex COLAs or this, whatever it includes. You know, I, I think, you know, while I see I, I do not sit in the majority here, I don't think we serve our employees or the public by delaying this decision, that I think all of us probably agree today is the correct salary plan for our non-represented employees. I don't know what's going to change it between now and December 1st, but I'm more than willing to wait. Just wish that folks would have expressed that sooner so we could have set up a process that met your expectations for public involvement. So, with that, I guess we can reschedule this to come back to the board on December 1st, and hopefully you'll be able to find your comparators. I am pretty aware, at least in my discussions with other commissioners, that other counties are having difficulty attracting people, even though we're even further below, 22% below their, their salaries, and even further below the City of Eugene's department head salaries. But of course, the City of Eugene doesn't make news in the Register Guard. Commissioner Sorenson.
Thank you. There was some discussion about additional information that wasn't provided, not, wasn't provided in a, we're not going to provide it to you sense, but what was provided was excellent in terms of the report and the recommendations. What I think I heard earlier was the request for information in the comparator counties, whether or not they, the comparator counties, because we already know the answer, we are, we do have that problem. But the question was, are, do other counties that are comparator counties, do they have the problem of not filling positions, particularly at the mid and upper level? Because as I understand the, the statistics from the study, at least as it applies to our, the average of all the comparator counties to us, we're below the comparator counties. So, I think the question was, okay, for people that are above us, that are paying more than we are, are they having problems recruiting or not? And that may or may not be difficult to get, may or may not be easy to get, I don't know. Usually, in this line of work, I'm assuming it's harder rather than easier. But if you could kind of describe how you would do that, that would be helpful to me. Because, I mean, maybe it could be just pick up the phone and call the smallest, which I think is Jackson, and the largest, which I think is Washington, and make two phone calls to your colleague, your counterpart, and just ask them that question.
And normally, what we'll, we'll try to do is contact each of the counties. The, the challenge is often, you know, there, as you know, there are many demands on HR departments, and getting folks to answer basically survey questions is sometimes kind of difficult, so sometimes difficult to have folks call you back. And it also depends on what type of data they're gathering from those folks that are exiting also, if we are also to look into the retention piece, if they are gathering the specific reasons why folks are leaving their organization, or if they're getting some type of feedback about why they're having difficulty recruiting. So, it's, it's kind of a mixed bag. We'll certainly gather what we can.
Right. And then the other question that was asked, or at least what I kind of heard, was the underlying concern as well. And this, I think, goes more into Mr. Mokrahis' end of this, but it was more on the topic of, of the impact of the salary adjustments. And I guess to be clear, it's the salary range adjustments, not the salary adjustment, but the salary range adjustments on the overall financial picture. Heard one commissioner ask about the road fund, another about the overall picture. And I'm not sure what additional information you could provide. I'm not sure how to encapsulate that or summarize it, other than to say, I thought you, you did try to address that in the agenda cover memo, that there was, there was money available to do this. So, Mr. Mokrahis, how would you respond to maybe a public concern? Well, where is this money going to come from? How would you just describe that? Or describe how you would try to get more information in the subsequent agenda cover memo or memorandum on the topic of where's the money coming from?
Sure. Mr. Chair, you know, to put it in context, what I would share with you, first of all, this is consistent with how we handle represented contracts. We're currently in bargaining with two of our bargaining units. We'll be in with three in January. We just got out of two or three last year. And so, these contracts getting negotiated in the middle of budget cycles, I mean, I certainly wish that they, we could schedule all, everything at one time, right in advance of budgets. We knew what we were going into, but seven bargaining units and a group of non-represented employees, that's not, that's certainly not possible. So, you know, we're pursuing this the same as we do with our represented groups, and we have to, when we negotiate contracts with our represented groups, we have to identify how we're going to pay for them. Typically, those are three-year con, two to three-year contracts. We're coming forward and saying, here's an increase in cost annually over the next two to three years, and we have to demonstrate how we're going to manage that cost. In this case, I will say, just in the general, case of the general fund, if the, the proposal were to be approved in the current fiscal year, represents less than 2/10 of a percent of general fund resources. Okay? So, we have about a $90 million, give or take. I'm looking at Christine. General fund expenses, and we're talking about $153,000 this year, so less than 2/10 of a percent of a cost. So, I understand that, you know, this is real, these are real resources that we're talking about, but when you look at it from the perspective of the overall budget, and when you look at the fact that we've got seven bargaining units, the average increase over the past seven years has been 10.5% over that period of time for those represented groups. For non-represented employees, it's been 1.5%. So, so the answer to your question, you know, how is the 2/10 of a percent in the general fund going to be managed this year? Because frankly, our non-represented employees are mostly supervisors, managers, directors, the leaders of our organization are the ones that are identifying solutions, reducing costs. We, we've talked a lot about our new health insurance plan. We moved from a fully funded to a self-funded health insurance plan. How do we do that? How do we actually implement that solution and reduce our budget to cost by $2 million this year? We did it because of the same people that we're talking about here. So, we'll pay for it through reduction of expenses within each of these funds.
Yeah, thank you. And, Mr. Chair, just to let you know, I, I feel like you're right. We, we did have a lot of this information presented to us, and as far as I'm concerned, you know, I'm ready to make a decision on this. But what, what I, what I would like to do is, is increase the comfort level of, of the commissioners in, in taking this action. I do think it's really unfair that a group of people ranging from some of the lowest-paid employees in Lane County to some of the highest-paid employees, really have not had any serious examination of their pay structure in many, many, many years. And I think that is a headline I would love to see, is Lane County Board of Commissioners Addresses Long Standing Issue That Hasn't Been Addressed. Okay? But we are not in that particular line of work, and so we aren't going to do that. But I, I do feel that if we could get some more information that would allow commissioners the, the, to be able to say that they have been provided with the information that they feel they needed to make a good decision, that would improve the process. And I don't know how many times we've done this in the, in the negotiated setting or the bargaining with represented groups, but it is not uncommon to have a decision made in month eight that is retroactive to month one. That is not uncommon at all. And we've seen those decisions being made due to the time it takes to come to an agreement on a collective bargaining contract.
payroll loves this form. So, I think we've kind of decided we're going to bring this back on, on to the, in the December 1st meeting, and we'll see if we can get the information that some of the commissioners have requested.
Commissioner Farr. And I will anxiously await the further information. And, you know, if a headline were to say addresses long-term forgetting to, to address employee needs, or if the headline were to say something like 2/10 of 1%, you know, the actual numbers, you know, something that really means something that people can understand, I'm, I'm not confident that's going to happen though, so look forward to the discussion next week.
Thank you.
Yep. Or, you know, kind of put things in perspective, like that the City of Springfield's Public Works Director has actually paid more than Lane County's Public Works Director, you know? And compare the size of the departments and the volume and the budget of those departments. But yeah, that's beside the point. Commissioner Sorenson.
So, just to be clear then, we're not going to have anything interim between now and December 1. We're going to have a period of time for staff to try to piece together what they think we have set up here.
It gives the public that full month to review the, the documents we represented.
Right, right.
And make comment to us.
Exactly. And, and then you're envisioning on December 1, we would be having another discussion and decision?
That's my, my objective.
Very good. Thank you so much.
And it'll give us several public comment periods and lots of time for email and other telephone calls for the public to weigh in.
Mr. Chair, I just asked that if there are any other requests for information that commissioners have, to please get those to us in advance so that we can get all of those issues. I think this certainly was an issue that we probably could have had information today for you if we had a little bit of lead time to look into it. So, we're always happy to do that work if we have the advance notice.
Yeah. I apologize for not getting the request in advance. So, that'll deal with item 8A, so we need to jump back to item 7A, which is county administration announcements. Commissioner, Mr. Mokrahis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just announced, I shared with the board, sent an email late last night announcing that Lydia McKinney has been selected as our new land management division manager. Went through a, a competitive national recruitment and extensive process there. And I think all of you have some familiarity with Lydia and her great work as our transportation planning supervisor. She's worked with Lane County for the past several years. She worked, has worked previously for Cottage Grove and the City of Eugene, and she's just, I think, an outstanding talent. So, in this case, we're really happy that we've been able to identify someone internally to the organization to lead that operation, and we're excited about a number of improvements that will come in our land management division going forward, and have a lot of confidence in Ms. McKinney and her skills and experience and her collaborative approach there. So, ask you to welcome her and support her efforts and look forward to her contributions. And that's all I have for now.
Any questions? Thank you. So, we'll move down to item 9A, commissioners' business announcements, the announcements from commissioners. Commissioner Farr.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to mention a couple of meetings, very substantial meetings that I, substantive meetings, excuse me, that I had last week. The first one was on Wednesday. Last week, I was asked to moderate a panel of legislators at United Way, and the audience was nonprofit providers. There were about 40 people in the audience from some place in the neighborhood, 22 nonprofit providers. It was a really great discussion. They had questions for the legislature about a wide variety of things. And this was all in, in the wake of Umpqua Community College and, and the violence that occurred there. And a lot of discussion at that meeting was, was talking about what can we do? What can we as a, as a, as a community do, and what can the legislature do? And, and really, of the 27 agencies or so, 27 or so agencies that were represented there, almost every one of them, the main thing that they talked about was behavioral health issues. And that is, all, each of the commissioners up here, and you, Mr. Mokrahis, have talked significantly about behavioral health issues. Our, our performance auditor has talked about behavioral health issues, and the focus that we're going to place on behavioral health is going to, is going to have a great deal of impact in many, many different areas. The second meeting I'm, I'm going to mention is last week, we had the annual retreat of the Mental Health Advisory, Local Alcohol and Drug Prevention Committee, M-HAC, Mental Health Advisory Committee is what it's often known as. And once again, behavioral health became the, the main topic. Of course, it is the Mental Health Advisory Committee. But one of the main focuses of the M-HAC in the coming year, and you'll hear, this board will hear a lot more about it, is coordination of mental health, behavioral health issues with public safety, and even greater coordination on an ongoing basis, something that we need to focus on a great deal, and you'll hear about it from the Mental Health Advisory Committee. It also came from the United Way Legislative Breakfast that I attended. It's going to be something that we'll hear a lot about in, in the wake of seeing people behaving irresponsibly, whether it be with weapons or in other ways. By addressing behavioral health issues upfront, we're going to take care of a great many downstream impacts of the results of behavior associated with mental health, behavioral health, and substance abuse issues. Thank you.
Other announcements? So, I, Commissioner Farr, just want to ask one question about your legislative forum you moderated.
Yeah.
I understand that the nonprofits had something to tell the legislators that kind of surprised them about minimum wage.
Yeah, yeah, there was, and I'll, I'll report the news on that. More than a small handful of the nonprofits said that the, adjusting the minimum wage to $15 an hour had a significant impact on their ability to provide the services that they provide. So, they, they asked for a more deliberative view toward a, they directly asked for a more deliberative view of the legislatures toward looking at what organs, what any adjustments to organs' minimum wage may be for the future.
Thank you. I just heard that from one of the participants that...
There was, once again, I'm reporting the news, that, that did come up, and it came up from a, not a small number of folks.
Yep. Yep. Thank you. Well, I just want to say, I got to participate in the grand opening of the Fernrid, I mean, sorry, the Florence Regional, FR, I keep wanting to go Fernridge, Florence Regional Arts Alliance, new facility down in Old Town Florence on Friday evening. It was a great event. It's great to see the arts being brought into Old Town and featured in an area that draws tourists, and that's part of the whole motivation is as an economic development piece, to just kind of add to that critical weight of Old Town Florence to attract people, and arts is part of that. And then I also just want to note for folks that, starting Thursday, I'm developing a new piece of outreach that folks can talk to me directly, more or less. I'm going to be doing an internet radio show on Thursday afternoons at 4:00 on KRBN. So if you just Google KRBN, you'll find it, more or less, or just, you know, find my Facebook page, I've got it announced there. And it has a call-in feature and email feature, so it'll be interactive, and I'll talk about anything you want to talk about, more or less, Lane County, or if you want to talk about my standard poodles, that's fine too. So just another piece of outreach, especially as I finish my community conversation circuit of the county over the last couple of weeks. It's just one more way for folks to communicate with Lane County. And I think it'll be interesting to see how well that works out. I've never done internet radio before, so I'm stepping into the 21st century here.
Is it okay to talk about long-distance tandem bicycling also?
Sure. Commissioner Sorenson.
I'll just mention that one thing that I have done over the years that has been a change in terms of technology, in terms of town hall meetings and other more outreach-oriented meetings. And this is a direct result of a NACO webinar I attended on how can elected officials avoid the problem of the same four or five people coming to the town hall meeting, I know this has never happened in the West Lane District, but in other districts it may happen, where the same people who are, you know, interested in giving their perspective, and certainly they are not shy about giving their perspective, but how do you, as an elected official, avoid the problem of simply hearing from the same small group of people over and over and over? And one suggestion that this NACO webinar had, and it's one of the reasons I think we should continue supporting NACO, is they do do specialized trainings for county people on specific things, is to try this new, or less new, but then new, not so new, it sort of go-to-meeting technology where you put the phone number out for people to call in. And that has worked well. If you have a list of people you can send out to and say, hey, I'm not this weak because of the windstorm or whatever, I'm not able to make five town hall meetings, but I will do three one-hour call-ins. And particularly, the commissioners that were on the call that were doing this really thought that they were getting a much larger group of people participating than doing the more traditional walk-in town hall meeting.
And I've actually done the telephone town hall, where we've actually dialed out to thousands of numbers at a time, and I actually had as many as 3,000 people on the phone at the same time. The radio show will be interesting because it does have that call-in number. It has gotten out there fairly extensively. And what's going to be interesting about it is, because it's an internet show, it's archived, and folks, if they can't listen to it live, can go back and listen to a previous show anytime they feel like. So if they hear that I was talking about an issue that they were interested in, they can go back to that archive and listen to that show. So I think it'll be a really interesting outreach. So I, one other item I want to talk about, and if there's, are there any agenda team requests or work session requests before I get to that? So I just want to mention, and this is for the benefit of Diana and staff, we really need to get our, if we know of a meeting we're going to miss, or when we're going to be on vacation, or when we have something scheduled for other business, we really need to get that to Diana as quickly as possible. Particularly of importance is, you know, Wednesday work sessions and if there's, you know, the Monday night joint work sessions, et cetera. Because she really needs to make sure we're going to have a quorum. And, you know, quorum under the charter is three, but, you know, all it takes is for somebody to, you know, have a slight accident on the way to the meeting, and next thing you know, we don't have a quorum, and we've wasted a bunch of people's time. So it's really important to keep your attendance, you know, let staff know as soon as you know that you're going to have a conflict with a meeting, and that gives us the opportunity to reschedule a meeting, or at least understand who's going to be in attendance and who's not. By the way, Commissioner Lykan had to leave early today because he's got a family medical issue he's dealing with and needed to leave at 11:30. And I will note that when Commissioner Sorenson was out of the room, I got a little note that he was actually watching upstairs. He was having a computer issue he needed to get cured. And seeing we all look at our agenda on our computers, it's an issue nowadays. So I appreciate the fact that he was up there watching on closed circuit while getting his computer fixed. So if there's no further work session, agenda team requests?
On this last one?
Yes.
I would just say that on our county website for the Board of Commissioners, there is a calendar of scheduled BCC and Advisory Committee meetings. And Ms. Jones does a spectacular job of trying to keep track of all the scheduled meetings that are then unscheduled and rescheduled and canceled and postponed and set out months in advance. And I just wanted to say that in terms of my own planning, that this calendar of scheduled BCC and Advisory Committee meetings is an extremely helpful tool to figure out when the board is meeting. If you look at the list of board meetings that we've had this year, starting from January 6 through October 27, you'll see an entire page of just the weeks that the board is meeting. So lots and lots and lots of meetings. And I know it's difficult to keep track of all these meetings, but I would just encourage Ms. Jones to keep up such a great job of keeping that calendar up to date. And secondly, for the commissioners to keep reviewing it, because it is changed fairly often, and she does try to invite us to the meeting and make sure that our calendars have it on there. But it's a big job just trying to keep track of all the meetings, and I just appreciate the fact that, you know, most of the time, all five commissioners are present. But it is difficult when the board drops down lower and lower and lower in terms of attendance, it does mean that we're probably going to have to repeat something, for example. And that's not a good use of time either. So thank you so much for bringing that up today.
No problem. And I will remind folks that if we do miss a meeting, they are recorded and archived, and we can watch our meetings rather than ask for repeats. So hopefully that's what board members do when they do have to miss.
This is actually not an agenda item request, but Ms. Cook mentioned a active shooter exercise that's going to be taking place in the Florence School District next week, I believe it is. I'd love to hear a report on how that went, and perhaps if Ms. Cook could also include any other similar sorts of preparedness that is going on in her area throughout the county. I'm really interested in hearing more about that. Thank you.
Okay. So if there's no other business, we'll do a review of assignments.
We'll be back December 1st with the nonrep salary range information that the board asked for. That's the only follow-up that I heard.
And I guess we just had a request for?
And a request, thank you. And a request for the follow-up on the Florence School District active shooter training.
Thank you. Well, with that, we have a time-certain executive session this afternoon for 1:30, and it's not going to involve a subject that will require us to come back out into public session and make a decision, so we'll probably be adjourning from executive session. So I'm going to read us into executive session and recess us till 1:30. So the Board of Commissioners will meet in executive session to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations. This executive session is held pursuant to ORS 1926602D, which allows the Board of Commissioners to meet in executive session for the purposes listed above. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision will be made in the executive session, and we will be not coming back out into public sessions. So with that, I am going to recess the board till 1:30, and we'll be meeting in the Board of Commissioners' conference room at 1:30.